Good evening. Tonight is September 11th, 2023. And pre-meeting, we'll go over council agenda questions. If anybody has any, Councilor Azadi?
No.
Counselor, Counselor, Mayor Potem?
No.
No? None? City Council reports, Councilor Azadi? Councilor Seymour?
Yeah, short week last week with Labor Day. Did have the opportunity along with the mayor to attend the annual volunteer appreciation dinner. And C manager and many staff members there too. It was a perfect night to have an outdoor venue up at City Park. And I think we had close to 200 of our volunteers there. So it was, it was a nice opportunity to recognize those that give a lot of time to our city. And I think that was it. Saturday morning, early down at the Fall Festival on 73rd. Got to visit with some of our members of the Historical Society and one of our new business owners down there. So that was a great opportunity to chat with them. So that was it for last week.
Counselor Evans?
No, I picked up another CASA case, so I've been busy with that. So hopefully it will calm down just a little bit, but yep. But nothing council related.
Well, thanks for always doing that. You're special. Counselor Baker?
No.
Mayor Potem?
Tuesday, I was on the chamber broadcast. Shared with them about the budget process. And that was, was really short. And so it was probably maybe 10 minutes. Not, not a ton to talk about in the whole of the week. But just kind of talked through the budget process and how people could get engaged with that. On Wednesday, I attended with Councilor Azadi the Legacy Foundation Board Retreat. I did want to bring something back, and I'm not sure what will happen with it. But one of the things that was clear from that discussion was there's a lot of pressure on the executive director to figure out who we're going to be and get funding at the same time. One of the things I asked was if the city were to extend that MOU a year, if that would allow her some better opportunity to not feel so much pressure. Because you, I mean, as I shared with the board, you could kind of hear the angst. And I don't feel like the conversation was going in a productive way in, in the fact that it was, well, we got to get these grants, so let's pick something that we're going to be about that the grants will. And I, that seems like the backwards way to do it. So I anticipate that we'll probably be taken up on that. And I hope that council will support that. But as the board was pretty happy with that idea. And I think that'll give the Legacy Foundation a little better runway in order to be successful. So, but it was a good retreat, I felt. I, I did have to leave early because I had to work, but we made a lot of ground in the half a day that I was there. So the next thing that I had was Rocky Mountain CNR for the airport. That was quite an animated meeting. To be frank, got a little out of hand at, at points with public comment. And I'm not sure, hopefully that doesn't maintain that way. But we did make some ground. The representative trustee Zerbo from Superior brought forward a recommendation. He had worked with the director of the airport as well as the different flight schools, as well as, you know, the FAA to come up with some, what would be voluntary recommendations for pilots to basically not use the south runway and to do a tighter flight path around the airport after 10 o'clock. And so I know you saw the email. And I asked the trustee to validate what my remember was, that it wasn't going to push more noise over Westminster or anybody else. It was actually pushing the traffic not over people. So I think that that'll be good. Time will tell. Obviously, it is something that they don't have to do. But the, the director of the airport, if you listen to the meeting, felt like people would follow that. And again, it was a collaboration between all of them. And it sounds like the representative from Superior threw quite a few ideas, some they didn't like. And that was one that everybody agreed was something that they could try to do. So we did also discuss the letter from the two congresspeople. And my question was, well, if they're going to ask that, are they going to be offering funding for that? Because I know one of the roadblocks is that the Part 150 costs money. But, you know, I would remind folks what Devin, our chair, reminded the group of when I brought that up is, part of what we're doing with the consultants is to try to do things without having to go down the Part 150. And a Part 150 like the one that they're doing in Centennial can take a decade. And I mean, it's not like a thing that you just come up with it and it's done. So it's actually a pretty long process. So we'll see where that goes, whether or not we go down that path at some point. But we are trying to make ground before we, you know, do that, whether it happens or not. And that's it for me.
And I sent out an email today with the Northwest mayors and commissioners that are meeting Thursday. And our DC lobbyist, DuckCo, had met with Hickenlooper. And it sounds like the House and the Senate are on the same page and things aren't getting passed. So they're just going to keep working with Hickenlooper. So if I hear more on Thursday, I'll pass it along, but that's sort of where it sits today.
Appreciate it.
City manager and I and Deputy Opie and several other staff members went to the Bridge Summit in North Glenn the last week of August. And that was like four hours, three hours?
Four.
Four. Talking with all of the Adams County folks about homelessness and how do we attack it? And it was the first discussion and sounds like.
There'll be more.
Yeah. So then the volunteer dinner, always great. I thought Los Sarcos did a fantastic job feeding a huge crowd. And in a way that was set up was just wonderful. We, City Manager, Counselor Seymour and I went to the Jeffco Mayors and Commissioners meeting one of those weeks. And had a great presentation by the Jeffco Sheriff. We just got it late this afternoon, but I can send it out to you. So you have record of everything that they're working on and what she talked about. And the renaming of Trendwood Park to, was just, I know Parker's out in the, in the crowd. But Counselor Azadi was there, Counselor, Mayor Potem, and I know Counselor Seymour went early. But it was just a fun, 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 fun event. Hearing the different stories, getting to see his parents and his sister and, and the kids, wife. It, it just, it was a good, good thing you were there too. So today, I've been going to roll calls with the daughter that was involved in nine 11 and in the first tower hit and all we've been through for the last 22 years, even though she got out. I always feel pretty connected. My communication with her is never verbal. We texted this morning and she did text back. That's always a good thing because during nine 11, she didn't always answer because she just had to figure it all out. Anyway, we also, Mayor Potem and I went and visited all six fire stations. So just a good day to remember those that are called and don't know what they're walking into. Also, I'm half done today with my radiation. I'm good. Energy's great and things, markers are continuing to go down. So I'm good. Anything from you today?
No, ma'am.
Oh, then we'll see everybody at, oh, yeah.
I wanted to bring up an idea, and I know I've asked a couple of questions on the budget. And so I had asked about potentially decreasing the water rate to half the increase. And what was sent back, I agree that's something that probably shouldn't be pushed off, that what would be pushed off if we did that. One of the things I've asked about in the past was potentially using money out of the general fund, which I know is difficult, but it's not impossible. And I believe we've done it to some extent over the last handful of years to try to help people with the pressure from pandemic and water rates. So the challenge that I want to ask staff before we get to next week and see if council would be interested in this idea is if we did not forego any of the items that are in the budget for the water utility, but pulled that money that you said would have to be foregone, which I think it was 975, so pretty much a million from the general fund. And opposed to me, I did initially, I was going to go try to see, you know, what that would look like in my mind. But I think if council is interested in the idea, it would be better for staff to say, here are the things that we would want to drop if you wanted to do something like that. But I think that would be under what Tabor allows the limits to be in order to decrease that increase on rates, but still pay for everything and continue to see some relief when economic times are hard for our residents, if possible. You know, that is my idea and my ask to council if you would support that.
Clarify, you're asking council to have staff look at the possibility of pulling funds from the general fund to help reduce water rate fees indefinitely? Or just?
This next year.
Okay, just next year.
And I think that's an important piece because one of the things that I keep hearing in the public is that we've given this edict of you're going to get four and a half percent every year. Those rates have to be discussed every year. And whoever's on council gets to decide what those rates are going to be in perpetuity. You know, unless there's like in the past where there was a two-year budget put in place. But what I'm asking is just for this next year, instead of doing that four and a half percent, because I had asked if you cut that in half, what would that look like? We were given a very specific thing. I'd like to find out if it, you know, what staff would come up with and pull out of the general fund that's already earmarked to pay for that, reduce those rates and have a recommendation. Does that make sense?
I, I sort of had a different way of looking at a similar question. I forgot to send, I sent myself my budget questions. That was really helpful. But there's one table in here where in, for Public Works, Lord, I'm not going to attempt to find it right now. But it does identify how many customers received assistance and that it has actually increased since, you know, over the past three or four years. And so my question was, well, how much is that? And then are we budgeting enough? And my, whether or not it comes out of the utility fund or if it's coming out of general fund, I don't know. And so it kind of goes back to, yeah, like just like a different way of looking at it. Because I was more, do we need to budget more in this, for this assistance piece? Because that's more direct than like across the board doing a reduction. So that.
I'd, I'd be open to having them bring both things back.
Yeah.
Because I think that that's kind of a longer standing, not just this year. Whereas I think this year in particular, because of economic conditions, I think that our residents would benefit from that because nobody is, you know, including the city, is not being hit with the way the economy is. So I don't dislike your idea just in general because I think that's something long-term. Well, you know, we should make sure we have a good pulse on it. But I still would like, you know, and maybe they come back and, you know, we don't like their recommendation and we go as is. But I think it would be an, an exercise that would be worth the time in my mind.
But, yes.
And I'd be okay, especially seeing the balance there between those two because we can target with the assistance. We can look at overall and then making sure we don't violate the taper cap as well too. So it'd be nice to see some options.
Counselor Azadi?
Yeah, I think we should always see options, especially this is a 2024 budget. So we should look at all the options. So I agree with both of them. And the items I sent you as well, I'd like to bring those up. I'm assuming you're looking at those.
We are, although there were no questions.
No questions, just feasibility and.
Sure.
Options.
Counselor Evans?
I would agree at looking at both options.
Counselor Baker?
For a one-year thing, what's the long-term benefit of it? If we want to look at options, fine, but I see no long-term benefit.
You're a yes, and you?
Yeah, yes, looking at both.
So you've got.
Yeah.
You've got six.
Okay. Got it there.
Thank you.
Anything else? I'll just say, Obi, when I saw your list, some of the things are already done. So maybe you guys can get together and. If there's nothing else, we'll see you at seven o'clock.
Welcome to tonight's meeting, September—oh, sorry—you're coming. September 11th, 2023. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Westminster City Council meeting for September 11th, 2023. We thank you for coming and would like to remind all in attendance that our meetings are subject to the rules decorum and are posted at the back of the room. These rules are in effect until our meetings are in session—while our meetings are in session and as well as during breaks and transitions between meetings. We want to be sure all feel welcome and remind all that there is an expectation that no attendee shall disrupt this meeting and the threats of intimidation are prohibited. Signs and placards are prohibited in council chambers and all attendees shall remain seated in the seats provided, not in the aisles nor shall the doorways be blocked. Roll call, please.
Counselor Baker.
Here.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Present.
Counselor Emmons.
Present.
Counselor Azadi.
Here.
Mayor McNally.
Here.
Counselor Namila.
Here.
And Counselor Seymour.
Here.
That brings us to the minutes of August 28th. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the August 28th, 2023 meeting as presented.
Counselor Emmons?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the August 28th meeting, 2023. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to presentations. Today is September 11th, and we remember 2001. For our family, I know, it's been a tough day. We always remember we had a daughter in the first tower hit. She did get out, but six of her comrades did not. So, we want to take a few moments and just think of those that lost their lives, the fire and police who got the call and didn't know what they were walking into, nor do our police and fire when they get their calls here in our own city. We always need to remind ourselves to pray as we hear those sirens because they don't know what they're walking into. So, take a moment, please, with me to remember the events of September 11th, 2001. Thank you. We have a proclamation for Constitution Week. Counselor Seymour?
Am I good? Okay. If I could have the delegation from Daughters of the American Revolution come forward? Hi, Joyce. How are you? Good to see you again. Would you like to introduce yourself and your compatriot here?
My name is Joyce Thomas. I'm the former Regent of Front Range Chapter, Daughters of the American Revolution, and I'm Chair of Constitution Week. This is my friend Lynn Official, who is the corresponding Secretary for our chapter and has been for several years now.
And Chair of the Project Patriot, which is the active-duty military.
And Joyce is the fellow mayor of my hometown, Northland. So—no?
Federal Heights.
Federal Heights, next door. Okay, sorry.
Joyce Downing.
Joyce Downing, my other Joyce. Okay. I was going to give you my seat for tonight, but so much for that. Constitution Week is a yearly observance started by the Daughters of the Revolution in 1955 when they asked Congress to set aside the week of September 17 through the 13th to observe till the 23rd. Boy, I'm on a roll tonight. This resolution was later adopted by the U.S. Constitution and signed into public law on August 2nd, 1956, by President Dwight D. Eisenhower. The celebration aims to do the following: emphasize the public's responsibility for protecting and defending the Constitution and preserving it for prosperity; inform the people that the Constitution is the basis for America's great heritage and the foundation for our way of life; and to encourage the study of the historical events that led to the framing of the Constitution in September 1787. So, I'd like to read the proclamation. Whereas it is the privilege and duty of American people to commemorate the 237th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America with appropriate ceremonies and activity, and whereas every American shares in this legacy of liberty, we are grateful for the courage, conviction, and sacrifice of all those who have helped preserve and uphold the principles of a free society. As we remember the enduring importance of the Constitution, we will also recognize our responsibility as citizens to respect and defend the values of our founding and participate in the unfolding story of freedom. And whereas in celebration of signing the Constitution and the recognition of Americans who strive to uphold the duties and responsibilities of citizenship, the Congress by joint resolution of August 2nd, 1956, requests the proclamation that the week of September 17th and ending in September 23rd of each year is Constitution Week, with Constitution Day being on Sunday, September 17th. And now, therefore, I, Nancy McNally, Mayor of the City of Westminster, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week, and call upon the people of Westminster to urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which those privileges involves. Signed this 11th day of September 2023, Nancy McNally, Mayor. We're going to get a picture here.
And we would like to get a copy for our chapter.
Absolutely. We—okay? We sell framed copies of that.
Also, I have copies of the pocket Constitution. I don't have a lot, but I have enough for council and for a few in the audience if they want.
Thank you.
All right.
Very much.
Thank you. Okay.
Get you caged in. It's time for public comment. The public comment portion of the meeting is an opportunity for the public to communicate with city council. Each participant will be given no more than five minutes on any topic they choose. Public comment is not intended to be a back-and-forth discussion. If there is a public hearing scheduled for the item on which you wish to speak, please hold your comments and testify when that public hearing is called. Tonight, there are two public hearings on the agenda: the public hearing on the 2024 proposed budget and a public hearing regarding the approval of an ODP for Uplands filing, two Block One. This evening, the city clerk has informed me that we have one email and—by the Dunline, which has been posted on the agenda packet and forwarded directly to city council, and we have three voicemails, which will be played back after our live speakers have concluded their remarks. Tonight at the podium, we have the lights back. The only change is the yellow one will be for one minute, not two. So, you'll have the green for three minutes, you'll have the yellow, and then when it turns red, I will let you know that your time's up.
Our first speaker is Parker Brown.
Welcome.
Good morning or good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, city councilors. I want to start by saying thank you to City Manager Freitag, Mayor McNally, Mayor Protem Demat, Counselor Azadi for coming to the park renaming at Tobacco Horse Park. It was a huge success. We had over 350 people in attendance. Also thanks to Chief Burke of the Westminster Fire Department and Sergeant Esslinger at the Police Department for organizing both units to come help us. But I came—I'm coming before you today, though, to talk about West Cliff Parkway and the West Cliff neighborhood. There are five schools in our neighborhood: Betty Adams Elementary, Simper Elementary, Mandalay Middle School, Doral Academy, and Jefferson Academy directly across from the West Cliff neighborhood on Old Wadsworth. As you may not—as you may or may not be aware, last Tuesday morning, a little boy was riding his bike to school and was hit by a car. I'm not sure if the driver was speeding or just not paying attention, but both happen every day, especially during school hours. Luckily, this kid only suffered some broken bones. I'm hoping to have you all consider—and this is where I might have been talking at the wrong time. I might have been supposed to be in the budget conversation, but here I am. I'm hoping to have you all consider putting money in the budget to fix some of these issues in our neighborhood before someone ends up in a worse situation. Speeding unfortunately is an issue all over the city, but I have a couple resolutions in mind, even though I'm not an expert on any of this. I'm hoping that we can put a speed bump in front of Mandalay Middle School and flash some beacon lights in front of Mandalay. As I've—for several years in a row have entered those requests but been denied on Access Westminster. Also, on 95th and Pierce, where the kids are crossing the street going to Betty Adams Elementary, and on West Cliff Parkway at J Street, where the kids on the north side of West Cliff Parkway go to the trial to get to both schools. Also, asking you just one last say to consider to extend the school zone from Church Ranch to J Street, where right now it is at Church Ranch Boulevard, to right, you know, a little bit before Reed Street. I also know the Police Department is extremely busy on a daily basis, and that every neighborhood is requesting something to be done about speeding and to have more officers in their neighborhood. But I'd also like y'all to consider having an officer, you know, at least one day a week or two days a week, you know, in those school areas in West Cliff, you know, to deter some of those traffics. Since—I could be wrong when I was trying to do my math—that I think we have the most schools in one neighborhood, being five, you know, so—you know, so there are a lot of schools. But lastly, I've entered once I said before—I said I entered some of these requests in Access Westminster. But thank you so much for everyone's time, and I hope you all have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Karen Calaviti.
Welcome. Hello, Karen Calaviti, 9940 West Cliff Parkway. I want to speak about land in general and how we should be respecting it rather than kind of trashing it. I'm specifically talking about the Westminster Water Treatment Plant. That is a beautiful site with a lot of wildlife, including bald eagles. And the thought of converting that to a utility center just because—just because that was the only thing that the consultants came up with. One consulting firm was brought in to determine the fate of a 60, 70, 80, 90-year-old facility. And I don't—I don't know exactly how they came up with things, but I know that there's a lot of imaginative firms out there who could have come up with something way different and way less expensive and way less exploitive of a nice piece of land. I just heard, you know, "Let's reduce the amount we have to charge the rate payers," you know, "'cause it doesn't look good that they're having to pay so much this year." Well, we're going to have to pay a lot every year because this is not a well-thought-out plan for the water treatment. And instead of being imaginative about how to finance it, it would be a lot better to be imaginative about how it should have been planned in the first place, and there's still room and time to do that. I also want to talk about the Schoenberg Farm situation. I'm a little unclear what's happening, but that Schoenberg Farm should be respected as a farm site. I don't know who's planning to buy it, but I'm sure they're planning to buy it for the land. And that land should be used in a—in a farm-type of way, not just those buildings be protected. I could see a little orchard there or a little farm market, some business that actually respects the farm heritage versus someone just buying it for cheap, from what I understand, just for the land, probably to build more housing, you know, market-rate housing. I don't know what the idea is. But that land has—you know, it served a purpose. It served as a production site for the National Jewish Hospital, from what I understand. They had dairy and poultry that provided food down there in Denver for the National Jewish Hospital. And we have a need in this city for—for produce and food, and we might as well be producing some of that right on-site with people in Westminster doing that. I—I just don't like some of these decisions made about land, which is very valuable, unless you junk it up.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Nancy Travis. The next speaker is Tom Lambo.
Welcome.
Hello. Hope everybody's doing well. I'm here to invite God to be present here at this meeting and to be with us in Westminster. Please join me in praying. Heavenly Father in Jesus' precious name, you are welcome here and throughout Westminster. Everything is yours. Second Chronicle— Second Chronicles 26 states, he said, Yahweh, the God of our ancestors, are you not the God who is in heaven? And do you not rule over all the kingdoms of the nations? Power and might are in your hand, and no one can stand against you. The spiritual battle wages on, but victory is yours, and I will claim it for you now because no one can stand against you. I want to lift, lift up all the people that have been affected by the events 22 years ago today. May they feel, feel your compassion as you comfort them. Lord, we need hope in these unprecedented times. We don't see the spiritual battles happening all around us, but we do see the devastation, and we are in bad shape. We have the stresses of life, work, family, bills, debts, deadlines, and more. We have a lot of anxiety, and worse, we are an unbelieving people. So tonight, I lift up everyone to you and ask that you deal with our unbelief and give us hope. We believe more in ourselves than we do in you. Soften our hearts and take control of our will. Your words come true in Proverbs 3:5, where it states, "Trust in the Lord with all your heart and do not lean on your own understanding." And in Psalm 51:10, "Create in me a pure heart, O God, and renew a steadfast spirit within me." Help us to move away from self and rely on you. And our faith does not need to be great. In Matthew 17:20 through 21, you state, "Truly I tell you, if you have faith as small as a mustard seed, you can say to this mountain, 'Move from here to there,' and it will move. Nothing will be impossible for you." Help us with our faith and let us rely on you, on your word for your, for hope. In Isaiah 41:10, you state, "So do not fear, for I am with you. Do not be dismayed, for I am your God. I will strengthen you and help you. I will uphold you with my righteous right hand." And Jeremiah 29:11 states, "For I know the plans that I have for you," declares the Lord, "plans for welfare and not for evil, to give you a future and a hope." Faith in you and hope for a future will get there, Father, but not without you. Touch our lives and give us trust and faith in you, so our hope can rest in your word. In your precious name we pray. Amen. And finally, John 14:27, Jesus said, "Peace I leave with you; my peace I give you. I don't give to you as the world gives. Do not let your hearts be troubled, be troubled, and do not be afraid." Have a good night.
Thank you.
The next speaker is John Palmer.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm John Palmer, Westminster resident. Couple of things, kind of dovetailing on what Karen Calaviti was speaking about in regards to the Schoenberg Farms. I think it should be publicly stated, publicly known, that the city's giving that property away for $10, even though we have much more money invested into it in both maintenance and upkeep over the past, I don't know how many years. But again, what a travesty, giving away city property for $10. Okay, enough on that. I'd like to revisit Counselors Bill Forty. I spoke in length about last council meeting and why we shouldn't be doing that at this time. Again, Uplands is not at the point where they need that road closed right now. They do not have any of the infrastructure in, any of the water lines coming from 96th down to that project, down Lowell across to 84th. What's gonna happen is there's gonna be a bottleneck at 84th and Lowell, and not just rush hour, all day long. Anybody, if there are not improvements made as promised and committed to by the Uplands people when this project all started, they committed to doing all of the upgrades and improvements prior to construction. If we close Shaw Boulevard before the 84th and Lowell intersection is widened, having turn lanes for both east and westbound onto 84th, mark my words, there's gonna be fatalities and serious accidents there. Mark my words, not if, but when, that will happen, I guarantee it. There's no need for it. Besides the fact, they still don't have approval from CDOT for their project, they do not have a sign off from FEMA in regards to the flood plain down at Shaw and Lowell, as well as it has not been signed off by the Maui Flood District. So I'm hoping that you people took some time over the last couple of weeks and did some research, asked some questions. More specifically, I'd like to talk about, I had made comments about that road being closed, and a member of staff, Ms. Borgers, got up and was questioned by a member of staff, I believe it was possibly Councilor Namela, why Shaw was being closed. Her response was, because of speeding. Show me the documentation, there isn't any. That was a bold-faced non-truth. I hope you people realize that, what happened there, that she misled you, misinformed you. If it were a problem with speeding, there would have needed been a traffic study done, and the city uses the 85 percentile mark for when and if traffic needs to be addressed. That's both by the PD and by the Traffic Department, Mr. Klein's department, and I guarantee that it was not within that percentile, that there was a speeding problem. So again, I ask that you please table your second vote on this until we can get all of the straight details, facts, and data, not just the, I guess, and let's make something up, speeding. If we're gonna use speeding as a reason to close streets, Independence should be closed. Haven't we had a lot of comments about speeding over in Independence, Councilor Azadi? 88th, 92nd, Lowell Federal, we can't use that excuse for everything, especially when it's not documented or substantiated. Again, that was a mistruth. I'm speaking nicely, there's another word that I could use here, but I'm, I'm trying to be polite. She misled you. I can't believe that you would let a member of staff mislead you on an important detail like that without more questioning. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next, excuse me, the next speaker is Chris Allred.
Welcome.
Thank you. May I pass around a few papers? Good evening, council. Hi, my name is Chris Allred. I live in Longmont. I work at Rocky Mountain Peace and Justice Center, and I've studied Rocky Flats for the past nine years. The document that I just passed around to share is a letter from Representative Nagus and Representative Pedersen requesting air monitoring at Rocky Flats. It is a letter to the Department of Energy and the EPA. And I wanted to make sure that this was brought to your awareness. It is dated June 20th of this year. And this letter was in follow-up to three local governments who also sent letters to DOE and EPA requesting air monitoring. That included Arvada, Broomfield, and Boulder County. So I am here to ask a few questions of the council. The first question is, will the council please consider also supporting efforts for air monitoring at Rocky Flats? And if so, please be sure to make that a public process that includes an opportunity for scientists independent of the Department of Energy to comment on the air monitoring protocol. I believe that's very important, to have the public process while this is being implemented. And this letter makes it clear that not only local governments, but our federal elected officials are noticing what is happening at Rocky Flats and taking an interest for public health and safety. This, this letter is also in follow-up from the Marshall Fire, which occurred. But I'm here to address another topic on, in regards to Rocky Flats, that is the Rocky Mountain Greenway. And just a brief history of some of the local government involvement with the Rocky Mountain Greenway. It is a mountain bike trail that is proposed to go through Rocky Flats National Wildlife Refuge, and it includes two construction projects, one on the north side and one on an overpass over Indiana Street, which I believe Westminster has authority over at this time. And I wanted to request that Westminster please withdraw from this project and join Broomfield City Council and Superior, who Superior denied it outright at the beginning, and more recently, Broomfield withdrew from the project. They also withdrew from the Jefferson Parkway, and they cited a finding of a 264 picocuri per gram particle of plutonium along Indiana Street, not far from where this overpass is proposed to be constructed, I believe. And just for some perspective on that number, the average background level of plutonium is about .04 picocuries per gram compared with 264 picocuries. So we are talking orders of magnitude higher than background level, and it is not really a scientific debate whether or not there is contamination at, along Indiana Street. We know there is because studies continue to show that there is contamination there. The, the, the debate tends to be of how harmful is that contamination? And through a construction project, dust gets brought up into the air. When that, that was radionuclides become airborne, the risk is from inhaling those particles and those contaminants. So I would also like to ask about the council's precautions in regard to OSHA for any construction projects or development in that region. And lastly, I'm also very concerned about the Rocky Flat Stewardship Council. I thank you for posting the public notice about it here, but it is operating under a very serious conflict of interest. The executive director is paid by the Department of Energy and continues to suppress public comment. More, most recently, there was a new website designed of the Rocky Flat Stewardship Council, and all of the public comments were deleted. So I would like to bring that to your awareness, and please do not support DOE funding for the Rocky Flat Stewardship Council and issue an RFP for a new executive director. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Mary Berg.
Welcome.
Thank you. Do I have, I have five minutes. Okay. I'm going to first review, because this is general, addressing the council, that it's very important because when Lindsey Smith and David Demott and Rick Seymour ran for office, there's a paper in which they commit to doing certain things, and I just want to remind them, because there are several things on the agenda tonight that apply. Okay? I really appreciate that David Demott stood for individual trash haulers, and he said that I oppose the idea of government picking services or vendors for us regarding those, those trash haulers, because he was supporting private small business, which is the core of the American values, and that our government's number-one duty is to protect its citizens and their individual rights. And Lindsey Smith spoke about investing in cost-effective targeted ventures is fundamental for attracting the private sector. And Rick Seymour made it really simple, he made three bullet points. He said, being a public servant, really listening to our citizens, specifically addressing your concerns. So the previous gentleman, I hope you take very seriously, because that is an abomination of a level of the picocuries, as he talked about. But what I'm really here tonight as an overall thing is that the, because the, the implication from running for office was that you were going to represent the citizens, obviously, who live here. And the project at Uplands is, I don't know if you know this, or the people in the audience, that Vardy, depending on which year you, you go to, they are about a $95 billion company that is really directing all of the things at Uplands. And this is basically a UN Agenda 21 stack and pack, uncharacteristic of our neighborhood that we've been paying the property taxes here to establish the city of Westminster for, I'll say, 65 years, because that's been the history of the area that I live in. The, the also, because to be this large a company, they are in, they are in, in oil and gas, they, they buy, you know, the, the businesses that are forced by unfair competition and the government rules, who are forced to basically sell their business on pennies on the dollar, Vardy picks up. Okay, so the real estate whole development here is similar to all over the world, including India, and I'll be glad to give the city councilors a copy of this five-page summary if you don't know. But we aren't being represented as the citizens in a community that has development that's in character of what we've come to know. And I know, I know several of, you know, where you live and you live, you know, where there's distance, where there's lawns, where there's a, a very far safer, and safer in terms of fire, police, you know, the not being, having theft in the neighborhood, and et cetera. Although my car in, in the city of Westminster has been stolen three times, and it was only a miracle I got it back the, the last time. So anyway, I think that we have to consider ourself not with their plans, because you are, we, the people are your employers, not the, these company, or, you know, this company. So it's very important for us to be listened to, and that's what you ran on. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That's the last live speaker we had signed up. Are you ready for voicemails? We, we do have three voicemails this evening, and I just wanted to make note that the last voicemail, the quality of the actual voicemail is not great, so we're gonna try to adjust the volume so everybody can understand. Thank you.
This is Mitchell A. Seidels. Just want to leave a message about the water processing plant. I want a big no on approving that idea. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Meredith Warren. I live in the West Cliff neighborhood. I've been here for nine years and have been a Westminster resident for 12 years. I am calling about my concern about our safety on, along our neighborhood street, West Cliff Parkway. For years, there's been a lot of speeding and both well over the speed limit, and it is a safety concern. A week ago, a young girl was hit on her bicycle crossing the street to go to school, and it is definitely a concern shared by my neighbors. I have some suggestions that I would like the city to consider. One is considering a lane reconfiguration along West Cliff Parkway. Ideas that I know one streets person has shared with me is making it one-way each way with a turn lane and extended bicycle lane that could reduce the feeling of wanting to drag race, which seems what some people do, as well as giving it more of a neighborhood feel. And so that could potentially reduce the speeding. Also, possibly reducing the speed limit by five miles an hour and adding speed tables. I know there is concern of speed bumps and the speed and gas usage, but was wondering if... if reducing the speed to maybe 30 miles per hour and adding speed tables could help. Also, extending the school zone, which was recently added due to Doral Academy, extending it through Otis Street on the west end, and also on the south or east end of the street by J Street or Otis Drive, adding a crosswalk that would help the children crossing the street to go to Betty Adams, make it safer for them. And lastly, I do want to thank Jake and the City Manager's Office for responding to my email about the sidewalk along Lodsworth Boulevard between West 98th Avenue and West 96th Avenue. I know it is in the Transportation and Mobility Plan, but I, along with other neighbors, would recommend that we try to prioritize this as a safety issue for primarily students going to and some upper elementary, but also other pedestrians and cyclists along that area. Thank you for your consideration, and thank you for your work supporting and advocating for the city. Goodbye.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, Councilor, and Councilwoman. I'm the mayor of the city of Kansas City, and I'm the mayor of the city of Kansas City. I'm calling because I received this email that we see from Council Baker, along with the council's House of Representatives, the Council Baker, the other seven officials in the county. Anyway, I am a fine believer in free speech, and still a little uncomfortable with the century vote, although I get the Council Baker called me to be manager wire, and I didn't like the experience of manager right then and there. I'm here to provide leadership between the city and the town. So we have a senior city manager no longer with the city that had a ten-year connection with the truth. The council should be able to discuss that openly, but I get that this repeated education is always trying to be the wire across the working environment, and I completely understand the point. Now, to begin, Council Baker claims the council acted stupidly. The council came to find out the second opinion on the new water site was done by the same engineering company that worked on the Westminster Boulevard location since March of 2019. Of course, the second opinion, because engineers did great work at the best location. Personally, I think that Baker is being very professional in this regard. Even if it's a senior engineer, no matter what firm you work for, or client is, we look at the scope of the project and put a price to it, and with our duty to the public. While engineering judgment is not powerful, I expect to get a fresh look in each professional site when there is a real look. I know that the engineering is very complex, and the city is not single, as Council Baker asserted. Remember, this council saved $100 million on this new water plant, and water bills are still lower than two years ago, and we are going to be having increases that below the current rate of inflation of our balance also is comparison of water rates in Westminster to water rates in other cities, not necessarily apples-to-apples comparisons, as each city has a different meter fees and everything else in addition to the balance charges. So, the escape water on water, for my place, would cost the same as the new deal as it does in Westminster, just because of the difference in meter sizes and meter fees. Now, as the council acted stupidly, I need to be some rejection going down there from here, sir. I know that Baker thinks that we are developing development contracts that mean six years, which might likely could open the city in the last year. It's also Council Baker's saying function closed the water now. The question now is, what about a major revenue changes? If we were to do some of these things, you could find like a lot of Council Baker's questions, I believe that some of the items that we should take at the look that they do not take everything they value. But from what I've seen here in the stands, seems like Council Baker's views are myopic, weapon, and quite frankly, undecognable, Westminster City Council. So, thank you to the council for all you do, and thank you for your time this evening. Have a great night. Goodbye.
That's the last voicemail.
Thanks. Is there anyone in the audience that got here late and did not get signed up to talk under public comment, not on a issue for public hearing? Yes, sir. Welcome.
Thank you. Yes, I did get signed up. So, anyway, I'm plowing over old ground. Oh, by the way, my name's Keith Raymond. I live at 3320 West 96th Avenue. I'm probably plowing over old ground, but it's Uplands. It's an abomination. I feel that this council has betrayed the citizens of Westminster, used the law to suppress their voice in the recall elections, and I hope the next council can further look at this much deeper and make some major changes to it, because there's way too much density. Some of the construction, especially on the slope of Bradburn, with what little civil engineering education I have, is bad. If you remember Green Mountain a number of years ago, those homes sliding down the mountain, maybe the same situation will be happening there. But in all, this project is bad. It's really bad. My second point, when I heard that Vardy Partners Hedge Fund was financing this, did a little digging, it's a foreign company, and right up front in their website, it says, "Opportunities in the wake of tighter U.S. banking regulations." Does that mean circumventing the banking regulations of this country in order to finance this project? Unbelievable, un-frickin'-believable that a project in this country cannot get financed by money from this country. Today's September 11th. How much? I'm just shooting spitballing here, but how much foreign money could be going into that hedge fund from terrorist organizations, either to make more money or launder money? I don't know. But because it's a foreign entity with offices all around the world, I'm very suspicious. And my last item, and it's a personal thing that has stuck in my craw for better than a year and a half during the hearings of December 2021, when Eric Kornacki, so-called representatives of the Uplands Community Collective, I'm sure this is a front organization, doesn't even exist, called out the citizens of Westminster as racist. I sent an email to all of you. The only response was Mr. Baker. The rest of you should have been outraged. Shame on you for letting such divisive language be uttered in a council chamber. It just, it's really bothered me for a long time, and I think you should have stood up at that moment and kicked his ass out, told him, no, this type of language is not acceptable in the council chambers. So I hope you keep that in mind, that if another incident like this occurs, that you stand up immediately and say something. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Again, we have two hearings. One is going to be on Uplands, one is going to be on public comment or on the budget. So only if you didn't, if you need to talk on either of those, you will wait. If this is just general stuff, you can speak. Welcome.
I signed up to speak, so I don't know what happened, but good evening, Mayor McNally and City Council. I'm Christine Ireland. I live in Westminster. Approving the Uplands development is upsetting on many levels. One that has not been mentioned is the density of this project is a fire hazard for future residents' safety and safety for the surrounding residents. I understand there is only one entrance out of this neighborhood. Why is more density being allowed? This just isn't about parents, it's about safety. What are you trying to create, a death trap? One entrance, and the density is unacceptable. When I was on my neighborhood HOA, we only had one entrance into our neighborhood. I was the deciding vote to get another entrance into our neighborhood, and thank goodness I did, because in 2013, we had the 500-year flood, and guess what happened? Our main entrance was underwater. Cars were underwater. We would have had no way of getting anyone in or out if it wasn't for that other entrance. It's unacceptable to have one entrance in and out of a neighborhood. When my husband and I moved to Westminster, we thought we moved into a suburb and not a high-density city and city problems. We are 20th in the nation now for apartments rentals being built. This statistic should be upsetting to all of you. Why has our city become apartment Mecca? By the way, I have talked to residents in Southwest Minnesota that are also concerned about where the children from the Uplands are going to school. I've been told that the schools in the area are full. What are the plans for a school? The residents of our city deserve answers. They thought they were who? They thought you were here to serve them, not the developers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, the last two, the last two speakers were signed up, but under the Uplands. So you have now spoken. Do we have anybody just for general? Otherwise, I'm closing and moving forward.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council.
Welcome.
My name's John Craze. I'm part of MJ Development, and we're partnering and working with the Colorado Historical Foundation and the city of Westminster, as well as the Jewish community, on the Schoenberg property. Our objective is to create a gathering place for people of our community and take on the responsibility and financial duty of repairing and managing these properties. Taking on this responsibility means we're going to allocate funds to the tune of $500 to a million dollars to repair these properties. And I just wanted to introduce myself, and if anybody has questions, I'll be happy to answer any.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
That brings us to City Manager's Report.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, councilors, ladies and gentlemen, and anybody who may be watching on TV or online. I will run through a quick update. So next slide, please. First of all, I've been talking about this now for about a month or so, and that is the city has transitioned its website to westminsterco.gov. The purpose in doing so is that's a Department of Homeland Security-hosted domain, and so it's a more secure domain for our city to operate on. And so that change is in effect, went in effect last week. A few glitches here and there, but all in all, a very smooth transition. I appreciate our IT department and others that have worked diligently to affect this change, and, you know, frankly, we're moving forward, seems to be working well. If you do send something to our former domain site, which is cityofwestminster.us, it will still be forwarded to this new site, and so no issues there. Next thing to highlight is Parks, Rec, and Libraries Vision Plan kickoff. That goes this month. It's a multi-dec, the vision plan itself is a multi-decade roadmap to guide Parks, Recs, and Libraries work for further improvement of our community's quality of life. We've this month launched an online survey, and so if you go to our city website slash Parks and Recreation, Parks Recreation, you can take that survey, but that gets the process started. And then this October and into 2024, we will continue with community engagement, specifically interviews, focused discussions, community events, and of course, another survey or two. But looking for a lot of community input into this vision plan, because again, it is about the future of our parks recreation programming, and certainly our libraries moving on into the next several decades. Next slide. Next thing, great news story. Earlier this year, we were notified that one of our apartment complexes that will be a wraparound project at our parking garage was going to be delayed because of some power challenges for providing power. And I'm very, very pleased to announce to the council and the community that thanks to a lot of folks lobbying, the state lobbying Excel, and specifically Representative Shannon Bird brought home this good news last week, and that is that Excel will be able to provide power to that project. And what that does is that then starts the process for hundreds of millions of dollars in new development in historic Westminster. And so, great news story for our community, and we appreciate everybody, staff, councilors, state representatives, and certainly citizens in our Chamber of Commerce who have helped carry the message to the state and to Excel Energy. So that project will get to move forward, and we thought it was not going to be able to. Drinking water facility activities began this past week. If you've been on Westminster Boulevard, the future side of our water treatment facility, we have started to prepare that site. We're putting in a trailer building where we'll be able to have meetings and host activities on-site, and so that prep work began this past week, and so we're excited to see that project moving forward. Early October, we'll be able to stage, plan, and then coordinate those activities there. And so the other item here is we've got an environmental assessment. The public comment period begins tomorrow. That's important. There's an information packet or an information-only memo in our packet this evening, and so if you want to learn more about that project, go to our city website slash Drinking Water Project. Next slide. Some Westy wins. One of our police officers provided inaugural training for the Royal Bahamas Police Department. Pretty cool opportunity there, great picture to the right. But our senior police officer and National Association of School Resource Officers Director Kelly Jacobson was invited to teach Nazro's Basic School for the Royal Bahamas PD, and this is the first time that the Nazro training has been taught in the Bahamas. So Westminster PD was part of that inaugural event, and so kudos to them. Also, another police department initiative, and that is that 95% of our police department has been trained in active bystandership for law enforcement. The acronym is ABEL, and it teaches officers effective intervention strategies and empowers officers to create a culture that prevents and eliminates actions that may lead to allegations of misconduct. ABEL was developed by our Georgetown University's Law Center and grew out of New Orleans Police Department's Ethical Policing is Courageous Program. And so we'll be working towards 100% on that participation, but it got well underway, and we're glad to be a part of that program. Next slide. Some things to know. Planning Commission meeting goes tomorrow, Tuesday, September 12, 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. That's here in City Hall Council Chambers. Inclusivity Board meeting Wednesday, September 13, 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. It's a hybrid meeting, either online or here at City Hall, specifically in the City Manager Office Conference Room. Neighborhood Nights goes this Friday, September 15, 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. in downtown Westminster. That program has been immensely successful throughout the summer, and we're excited to be able to provide that activity for our community. City Council Budget Study Session goes Monday, September 18, 6:30 p.m. Please note that we'll be in our multipurpose room downstairs. That's similar to our budget study session that we had on August 5. But again, the council's budget study session will be in the multipurpose room, and there'll certainly be signs that get people downstairs to that multipurpose room. And then lastly, City Council Town Hall goes Thursday, September 21, 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. Crown Point Academy, and that's 2900 West 86th Avenue. Everyone's invited. We look forward to folks attending. Those have been also been extremely successful this year, and we appreciate the council's outreach and engagement of the community. Next slide. As I mentioned, information-only items in our packet this evening, we have a Westminster Boulevard Drinking Water Facility project update, specifically addressing the environmental assessment. Next slide. And as always, encourage folks to reach out and contact us. We're happy to take your questions. We're happy to find answers that you might be looking for. We're happy to take feedback, and certainly criticisms if you have them. You can contact You can contact my office, 303-658-2006. You can email me directly at mfraytag@westminsterco.gov. And as always, I encourage you to follow us on Twitter, like us on Facebook. I said Twitter, sorry. X, the new X. But you can like us on Facebook, check us out on Instagram, or ring our bell at Next Door. As always, the city staff and certainly our council want to be accessible, responsive, transparent, and accountable. Penning questions, that's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Any questions? I see none, thank you. City Council comments. Anyone? Councilor Baker?
Thank you, Mayor. I've been given pause to consider the advice I gave a couple months ago about what to do when, when really confronted by hate. And I will be following my own advice.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody who came out tonight. I wanted to quickly say a couple things that I would hope staff can follow up with us on. On the crossings, that particular situation, I certainly am interested in more information, but I have got other questions because of the schools that have closed from Jefferson County. In my neighborhood, for example, on Johnson, there were crosswalks that were set up for kids to cross, but now the bus stops have moved, and those crosswalks don't really align. So I'm hoping we can use this as a springboard to reach out to our partners at Jefferson County, figure out where the new bus stops are in those affected communities from the closed schools, make sure that both our crosswalks and our lights are aligned, because I think that there's probably some tweaking that could be done. And then the other one was that we maybe follow up with our federal delegation on the Rocky Flat stuff, because I know, growing up in the area, we did used to have air monitoring, and I don't know what exists to date, but I would just like follow up on that if we could, City Manager. And then I have some comments for the evening. So it's been over two decades now since 9/11, and I was looking at some quotes, and Colin Powell had said after that event, that you can be sure the American spirit will prevail over this tragedy. If you were around during that time, I think the thing that sticks out for me the most besides the loss, the heroism, is really 9/12 and the amount of American spirit that we saw as a nation. We no longer were Republican, Democrat. We all were Americans. And I think all too often over the time since then, we don't always remember that. We've heard some comments tonight about people making ugly comments in this chamber. I can tell you, that's part of the First Amendment. People get to say things that we don't necessarily, as a group, agree with. However, we did swear an oath to uphold people's right to say things. And sometimes, they are certainly things that we don't agree with. However, that's part of this American experiment that we're all a part of. So my challenge to us all is really the way that we remember those that were lost is trying to remember what the American experiment is, what American patriotism and the spirit is, and that we can have disagreements and still be countrymen. We still can be neighbors. We still can work together even when we disagree. And I fear for my kids that we're losing that in this country. The mayor and I went and joined two different roll calls today to say thank you to our PD. We toured our six different fire stations. Unfortunately, Chief, your guys were out on calls when we got to three of them, so we didn't get to see everybody. However, they were a reminder to me that those are folks that are sacrificing to make sure that this experiment continues, just like the many people who went to war for us after 9/11 have done. And I just think that we honor those people's memory by trying our best to uphold those ideals that this country stands for.
City Manager Freytag, just going along with what Mayor Protem said, Sheridan Green is a shutdown school, but we have two flashing lights, one coming south, one going north, that could be reused someplace. But, as he said, the traffic used to be different. And when you're coming out of 112th and Harlan, the lights that are on 112th are between that exit. So you don't know that it's the 7:30, whatever time they turn them on and off, in the morning and the evening, you cannot see them, because they're, if you look to your left, it's the back of it. If you look to your right, you get the back of it. You don't know that they're flashing to go 20 miles an hour. So we need some other kind of either signage out of that neighborhood or something.
Yes, good points, all, and we'll have to certainly take a look at it. I'm sure the staff has already started to take a look at what the inventory of issues are out there. I'm not so sure we've taken action on those, but a good reminder, and we'll certainly get on that and then follow up.
Councilor Nubella?
I was just wanting to follow up on those items, too, but I also just wanted to appreciate what Mayor Protem said about just our overall level of civility and just working together. So just to follow up, I think that is a good idea to potentially reuse flashing signals that we may not need anymore for those schools that we're not going to have. I think when we hear from community members, residents, you know, we all know our neighborhoods best, and so I really value when they're coming in with ideas about how and where certain interventions could or should be made. They're the ones navigating the neighborhood on a daily basis. So I actually, the resident, I'm not remembering her name at the moment, who had called in with those suggestions, I thought they were actually well said, and hopefully we can follow up on that. Just along West Cliff Parkway all around, and I know that this is not the only street that we've, that we know we have issues with, with speeding. So I wanted to also follow up on a couple of things. One, to second, the desire for the air monitoring for the Rocky Mountain Flats. So that would be, hopefully others support that as well. I would definitely want to understand the, with respect to what the existing levels are out there, how construction might impact and disturb what's out there and impact the air quality. So that's a different, that's different than just the air monitoring. So we really should understand what that potential disturbance impact would be. And then the last thing, I also wanted to just follow up. I know City Manager Freytag, I talked to you a couple weeks ago, a couple weeks ago about just following up on Shaw Heights and just the process for street closure and talking to the community and having more regular check-ins with them. So that's, I know it's an ongoing element, but I would like to hear if you have any updates.
Absolutely. So first of all, the parking issue that came up, we removed the parking, no parking signs that were put up on Lowell Boulevard earlier this summer, and so we took care of that, listened to the community, and got some feedback, so that was good. Appreciate that effort. And then to your point about, you know, regular engagement of Shaw Heights and, you know, as uplands move forward, I've asked Deputy City Manager Andrews and his team that's kind of hunching that effort to schedule quarterly updates with the neighborhood so that we have some kind of routine mechanism for providing, this is what's coming up in the future, this is what's going to happen. And he was able to secure the buy-in from the uplands development team to be, to co-sponsor those updates. And so I think that's a great way of moving forward. And so, you know, that schedule, if you will, will be coming forth, okay?
Councilor Azadi?
Thank you. I just wanted to pile on my support for looking into the Rocky Flats air monitoring, but also the revisiting of the Greenway project. I think, you know, these other councils in Broomfield and Superior, they have looked at this. They talk about it. We've talked about it. I've spoken to them, to some of them about this. And it requires another look, I think, and that's why they pulled out. We should probably look at that. I also want to talk about West Cliff neighborhood, so thanks for your comment, Parker, because as we all know, and piling on everyone's comments here, it's an issue around schools, speeding, not just schools, but many neighborhoods. You've all heard me talk about this a lot on the Independence issue, on Independence Drive, that's a big deal to me. And I think we should look at holistically all these areas in the city, anywhere where there's risk. And we've heard from residents for years for some of these, like Independence Drive, we should be looking at that for the 2024 budget. And I would be for sure asking these questions when we talk about this next, next week, right? So, thank you.
Councilor Seymour?
Just a brief update on Rocky Flats. I was not prepared for that. To give a full update, I do sit on our representative from that, but the stewardship council at the assistance of many of us already, I'm part of an ad hoc committee along with Director Randy Mortman, counselor from RVADA, Director Claire Levy, who is Boulder County Commissioner, and I believe Counselor Devin Schaaf also sits on that ad hoc committee. And we started looking at what we can do as far as, first of all, baseline, and then knowing from, knowing for certain, unless we get outside help, DOE and DoD are not going to pay for ongoing air monitoring. So it's a matter of us looking at, first, should we develop emergency monitoring? And that was especially a concern coming out of the Marshall Fire, especially with Broomfield. And we know for a fact that there's been fires on Rocky Flats in the past, and there will be fires in the future. It's a prayer land now. So what could we do as far as off-site monitoring? And could we, just from initial standpoint, what would it cost for emergency systems if there were a fire out there? So that committee continues to work on that, and it would have to be a substantial IGA to fund that as well. And the issue is, how much do we pay for emergency things to sit around that have to be maintained because it's very delicate machinery? And, you know, would, by the time we use them, would they be obsolete? So is there better alternatives than that? So I can get further updates on that. I was not prepared for that tonight, though.
Thank you. Do you need anything more from us around Rocky Flats? I think I heard pretty good consensus. We'd like to know a little bit more.
I'm good to go, Mayor.
Thanks. If there's nothing else, I've been asked for a five-minute recess before we start continuing with the agenda.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
Counselor Emmons.
Yes.
Counselor Azadi.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Counselor Nermella.
Yes.
And Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
Next up is public hearing on the proposed 2024 budget. There is no presentation for this item. I know we have people signed up. And Parker, we will include your comments under this. So who else do we have?
The first speaker signed up is Mary Burke.
Could I be back and somebody else talk?
Yeah. She's the only speaker signed up, too.
Oh, really?
First of all, I thank you for giving us five minutes to speak. I just want to mention that regarding our budget, you went ahead with the new downtown. And, you know, in addition to having purchased the property essentially for $45 million, because it took $5 million to manage whatever you considered the real estate to be, you indebted the city of taxpayers with $100 million for the RTD station. And then you mortgaged nine city parks that were free and clear in order to purchase this property, the new downtown. And we're actually losing money on that property, on that project, because we can't fill the commercial spaces. And I don't know the other spaces that are vacant, but that's not the responsible use of the city taxpayers' money. The proposed sewage waste plant, or the re, whatever we call that. Anyway, I think that it's very important that you review that again and not have to spend that money for that little of processing. If we are going to double the size essentially of Shaw Heights, from a population of a little over 5,000 to adding 2,350 people, which makes the density of that area seven times the density of what exists approximately, we have to really be frugal with the way we use waste. And this project is, looks like, a payoff to, if somebody's making lots of money, or some people are making lots of money, and it's not effective, it's not efficient, and it may even be unnecessary. There are ways to solve this problem that other counselors have presented that are way more realistic, who have excellent financial understandings and math understanding. So I urge that you be as frugal as possible and watch, have a free-market competition for any projects that need to get done. Your history, your legacy here really counts, because we know who put in the new downtown. And a lot of people are pretty disappointed. I lived in New York City for over a decade, and when I go to Penny's, because I used to trade there, it was like I was in the parking area in New York City. It was so dense. It doesn't have the character that we have in a, we have lots of space, and we don't have to do that. So I hope you don't do things like, you know, mortgaging more of our property so that some people can win big time. Thanks.
Thank you.
That was the only speaker we had signed up.
Thank you. I will close the public hearing at 8:21. And that brings us to the public hearing to approve an official development plan for the Uplands filing two, block one. It is 8:21, and I will open the public hearing. And do we have staff presentation? Oh, there you are. Hi.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Councilors. John McConnell, interim planning manager here tonight to present the staff agenda item. Next slide, please. A staff agenda memo has been created, and tonight's public hearing has been properly noticed. The agenda memo is associated attachments to tonight's PowerPoint presentation, the public notices published in the Westminster window, the mailed notices, and the posted notices are hereby entered into the public record at this time. The notices of the public hearing were mailed to 1,345 property owners, addresses, and one HOA within 1,000 feet of the parcel under consideration tonight. The city has also posted the hearing date and time on its website. Next slide, please. Here's a map showing the location of Uplands filing two, block one. The parcel is outlined in red. The parcel is located south of West 84th Avenue, west of Lowell Boulevard, and north of Bradburn Boulevard. Next slide, please. The official development plan would facilitate the subdivision of the property for 82 single-family detached and attached homes. The vehicular access point for the development is off Bradburn Boulevard. The development includes a publicly accessible park with a playground, shade shelter, and swing set. Next slide, please. Section 11515 of the Westminster Municipal Code contains 16 criteria that are to be considered when reviewing official development plans. Staff finds that the official development plan generally meets these criteria as outlined in the agenda memo. Several examples of these criteria are that the plan exhibits sound, creative, or efficient planning and design principles. The architectural design of the structure is compatible in terms of shape, color, forms, and material, and existing streets are suitable to carry the traffic. For those selected example criteria, staff finds that the ODP exhibits sound planning by utilizing tuck-under garages, and that the architecture generally meets the design standards and reflects some of the common modern home designs that you find these days, and that the surrounding road network can accommodate the additional trips generated by the new development. Next slide, please. Staff recommends that the city council hold a public hearing and approve the ODP, subject to the additional condition located in the summary of staff recommendation in the staff agenda memo. Next slide, please. The Planning Commission voted to recommend city council approve the ODP via a vote of four to two. Planning Commission added an additional condition, that the place court, street improvements be removed or decoupled from the ODP. The Planning Commission meeting minutes from its July 25th public hearing are provided in attachment six. Next slide, please. Staff finds that the recommendation of approval of the applications would meet the city's strategic plan priority of ensuring that Westminster offers a diverse range of amenities and activities for residents, businesses, and visitors that honor the city's history and supports the arts, parks, recreation, open spaces, and libraries is met by facilitating new development and providing new publicly accessible park space. This concludes the staff presentation. The applicant is with us tonight and also has a presentation to share with you.
Thank you. Do you want any questions at this time or after both presentations?
I'm happy to take questions now, or I'm also happy to take questions after the applicant's presentation.
I don't see any lights on, so we'll let him proceed.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of City Council. You want us to go ahead and start, Mayor? Okay, great. Good evening. My name is Marcus Pockner. I am a land use and community outreach consultant for the Uplands team. I just wanted to note that we're handing out an additional document that just shows PDP compliance for overall Uplands and also for the site that's before you tonight on B1. So I just wanted to note that we're handing that out in addition to the slide presentations of material we have provided. Ladies and gentlemen, it's a real honor to be in front of you tonight to talk about Uplands. We are here specifically to talk about parcel B1 and the ODP. I want to thank John particularly and the staff for all their leadership and collaboration in really working with the community and the stakeholders to bring this project forward. This is our full team that is here tonight, myself, from the Pockner Company, Bonnie Nuzelik from Norris Design, and Matt Childers will be the presenters. And then we have a full team of experts that are here to answer any comments or questions that you may have. This is a snapshot of where we're headed, kind of our agenda. I just want to kind of give a roadmap of where we're going. We'll certainly talk about the site context. We'll talk a lot about the guidance, the comprehensive plan, and the adopted PDP, then go into the specifics of the neighborhood plan, talk about the amenities and our architecture, and the exceptions that we are asking for as well. This is the site. This is parcel B1 for Uplands. I think we always show it in the larger context of all of Uplands, but you can see parcel B1 here. Just for a site context, I think it's always important to kind of point out, obviously, just north of Bradburn nestled against 84th and the Lowell Terrace property, and then obviously, in its own way, kind of a separate parcel. But understanding the importance of it and the relationship to the Observatory Heights neighborhood as well. With that, for just briefly, I'm going to introduce Matt Childers with Dreamfinders Home to give a little bit of background on our first development to move forward, the first builder on this site, and have Matt tell a little bit about their company.
Welcome.
Mayor, Counselors, thank you for having us. I know it's been a long time coming to get to this point, and it's just helpful to have a face with the name with the home builder. So I'm with Dreamfinders Homes. I run the land department here in Colorado. And we'll build in about 20 communities at the moment across the front range, from Castle Rock up through Fort Collins, ranging in product from townhomes, paired homes, and single families, similar to what we have here. And I'll keep it brief and let it go back to the consultants, but we're really excited to be here, of course, and excited to be debuting two brand-new plan series here on B1. So thank you again.
Thank you, Matt. Okay. I do want to, just in transparency, go through a little of the material again, the notice that was provided on the site over almost 1,350 neighbors. This shows the mapped area of the notice that was provided, consistent with the neighborhood meeting that we had back in April as well. And I think always and importantly, we believe it's important for transparency to show an overall Uplands update. So we want to be sure and step back for just a moment and look at the entire site. There were some comments made tonight. We just want to be sure to show what the larger conversation is, and then actually B1 that is before you tonight. So this shows a couple of very important things overall Uplands, and most importantly, just looking at the map. The red is the sanitary sewer improvements, as you see, that is on 84th and Shaw Boulevard, excuse me, on Shaw Boulevard. You see those improvements? These are improvements that we are making outside of this proposal that's before you tonight. The green are storm sewer and infrastructure improvements along Shaw Boulevard. And then blue is all the trunk water infrastructure that is coming into parcel A. The improvement's there, and then obviously, you see the full movement interchange on Federal Boulevard. So those are the larger trunk infrastructure improvements that are moving forward, separate from this application. What is important is to denote the process that we are going through. So obviously, tonight, we are here on parcel B1. That was mentioned by John, was approved by Planning Commission or recommended for approval by Planning Commission. You see two other sites, A2 and A4, that are going through the traditional process as well, and we're actually presenting soon to them to the Planning Commission on those sites. The lighter orange, kind of an orange crush color, are now sites that are going through the concept review phase. So you start to see the different neighborhoods that are moving forward in the city process. I do want to note, just on the side of this, all of the proposed neighborhoods that are going through the process. They are affordable housing developments, they are all the things we are processing, they are for sale, they are for rent, they are showing all those different price points, the missing middle, all the different housing typologies that we wanted to bring forward. This is also that part that we spent so much time talking about with council and the city and the neighbors. It's about PLD and open space, right? So I just wanted to note, this is actually in the flyer that we handed to you as well, the public land dedication is exactly the same that we all agreed upon. So you see here the list of this. You see parcel B, which we're talking about, part of parcel B tonight, but you see the overall PLD is the same, 34.3 acres, and then the six-plus acres of view corridors. No changes, but we're really starting to implement and design with the city, obviously, that space into these individual neighborhoods. All right, folks, now we're going to transition to the neighborhood plan, right? Stepping away from that and now moving to B1 that is before you. We think it's always important to come back to the guidance. What are we presenting? Are we in compliance with your approval criteria? Just to note, this is the 2013 comp plan site. As you'll see here, this was an R5, a maximum of five dwelling units per acre on parcel B1. Your updated comprehensive plan, comp plan 2040, this is again denoted in yellow, which is low density. I just want to be sure and reinforce what we're starting with. We're starting with low-density parcel B1, again, the same maximum five dwelling units per acre. So we look to those two items, but then we also look to the approved PDP, what we approved before this body in December of 2021. This is finer points on top of the comp plan, and as you can see here, it actually has permitted uses, the types of homes that could be built on this site, and then again, a maximum of 82 dwelling units on this parcel. We are in full compliance with the PDP. So let's talk a little bit about that community outreach. We think this is such an important part of forming this. I want to say upfront, we will never have unanimity of opinion on this, but what we listen to is the opinions, the offerings, and how people suggest about how we could make the plan better. As you can see, since 2019, we have had 140 community discussions on B1 alone, and that is thousands of community touchpoints to form this vision, to form this plan, to bring it forward in the ODP tonight. A couple of things I just want to show, and as you look at the plan tonight that Bonnie will look through, I just want to show you why community matters. This was the original plan that we took to the neighborhood on parcel B1. And as you look at it tonight, you will see very substantial changes that came from that community and from the city, the stakeholders. You'll see significant changes. The connection on 84th no longer exists because people did not want to see that cut-through traffic. We actually followed staff lead on suggestions on putting the tuck-in garages below the site, or tuck-in parking. So we really worked with the community to move forward on all of these ideas, and you'll see a very varied site plan tonight that really reflects inclusive planning with the stakeholders and with the community members. I do want to just point out again, the PLD that is on this site. Absolutely no change here, making this dedication of that very important PLD. As you know, the site just to the north of this is called the Lowell Terrace, right? We know that terrace. It's named that for a reason, that view corridor is so important, and that public land dedication to have that access point there. The city has been the leader on this with the neighbors, and we're protecting that PLD on that site. In addition, we are adding a 1.5-acre public park on that site. I'm now going to transition to Bonnie Nuzelik with Norris Design. She's going to talk about how we've continued that inclusive planning with the neighborhood, and how we've buffered and transitioned from the existing communities. So she'll pick up the plan here and talk about perimeter setbacks.
Welcome.
Good evening, Bonnie Nuzelik, Norris Design, 1101 Bannick Street. Good to see you all. Thank you for your time this evening and over the past couple of years. As Marcus noted, the public land dedication and the setbacks really set the stage for this proposed neighborhood. He explained the public land dedication regarding perimeter setbacks. We meet or exceed those identified in the city's single-family attached and detached design standards, as well as the approved PDP. This was important to us in order to create that transition from the existing neighborhoods to the north and to the west. So just quick details on this slide. Each of the colors on the perimeter reflects the table on the left side. What's important here, though, is really that all those setbacks are exceeded. With this neighborhood, we are requesting a total of 82 homes, which include a mix of single-family detached, which are shown here in the pale yellow, and paired homes, which are shown here in beige. Access is provided via a local street off Bradburn with a secondary emergency access located at 84th to prevent that cut-through traffic Marcus was talking about. All the proposed homes are alley-loaded and have front doors and porches fronting on public streets, parks, and open space, helping to create a pedestrian-friendly neighborhood that engages the adjacent. that engages the adjacent public spaces. Central to that neighborhood is that just over one acre publicly accessible private park that is easily accessed by the trail network that runs through and around the proposed neighborhood and ultimately connects to the perimeter street and public land dedication on the east. The single-family homes, again, that pale-yellow color, are tuck-under homes in order to absorb grade, minimize the need for retaining walls, and best relate to the adjacent properties. The proposed plan also considers a view corridor located just to the south. Here is the before and after condition of the view taken from the southernmost point of the view corridor. No proposed homes are visible in this location. And then in this view, which is taken just to the north along Lowell Boulevard, near the midpoint of that view corridor, you can see the tops of the proposed homes just peeking over the tops of the topography, but the mountain views are preserved as was intended. The proposed neighborhood is highlighted by a centrally-located publicly accessible private park. This bird's-eye view is looking west across the park and features a tot lot for two-to-five-year-olds and five-to-12-year-olds, a shade structure for formal and informal gatherings, and a variety of seating options. The west half of the park includes a flat, tree-lined, open lawn area with sidewalks that wrap that lawn area. This connects to the overall trail network that loops across the neighborhood and connects to the perimeter streets. So all these dash lines you see on the plan are the various pedestrian connections within the neighborhood and to those perimeter streets. The proposed neighborhood includes a variety of sustainability features. All homes comply with Energy Star and WaterSense. All feature a Level 2 EV charging. All single-family detached homes with traditional roofs are designed as solar-ready. On the landscape plan, as green as it looks, turf is actually limited to just the active play areas. That covers just about 7% of the site, which is far under the 20% maximum coverage per the landscape regulations. And then all tree lawns consist of low-water-use straw material and native seed instead of high-water-use turf. The landscape plan is also focused on creating pollinator corridors to link the green spaces. The proposed homes include a variety of floor plans and elevation styles to provide architectural diversity within the neighborhood. First, we have the single-family detached tuck-under homes. To help absorb grades, these have two-story front elevations, which is what you see here, with three-story rear elevations along the alley. There are a total of four floor plans and three architectural styles, creating 12 different options to be used on the 38 single-family lots. Each home has a two-car garage. The proposed homes front on public streets as shown here, as well as public parks. As alley-loaded homes, the front porches help activate and engage these public spaces. You can also see that low-water-use landscape planned for the yards and tree lawns. Next, we have the paired homes. These are two-story homes, which are also alley-loaded with two-car garages. These include three floor plans and three architectural styles, creating nine different options to be used across the 44 paired home lots. The paired homes also face public streets, parks, and open space. Here you can see them activating that central public park located within the community. And with that, Marcus is going to walk through public improvements.
So Mayor, we are going to go back and forth for a few times just to walk through the material. I'm going to speak next about public improvements. I will note that personal improvements for myself, when we started this project, I didn't need reading glasses, but now I do, so I can see my notes better. I do want to walk through the public improvements on this site, and most importantly, note that many of these are addressing existing challenges on the site. So right now, this shows a really good summary of existing challenges that surround B1, and I want to be sure and denote kind of the solutions, the challenges that are there, and the solutions that we have worked with staff and others to design. Probably most importantly is on the west side of this site, to realize that approximately 15 acres drains to the west right now to the homes on Auburn Lane. That is the natural flow of the drainage, and it also crosses over Bradburn from La Place and goes directly to the house or the property at 8221 Bradburn. So we are addressing very significant flow issues of drainage as well. So that is one. I think secondly, and fair to say, that the La Place and 82nd and Bradburn intersection is challenging, right? It's challenging from a traffic standpoint and from a drainage standpoint, and we are addressing that in this as well. A few of those solutions that we are providing here that we believe really start to address these issues. First of all, we are putting swales on the west and the northeast side of our property line. That means we capture our drainage and take it to the detention ponds, most importantly, protecting existing neighborhoods and homes. So we are moving that drainage away from them. We are also capturing drainage here. So we are capturing drainage from Lowell, La Place, and from Bradburn, conveying it underground to our detention pond and then going through the system that we have. So just very important that we're actually capturing detention that is not there today and really addressing existing issues that are on-site. A few other things we want to talk about besides the drainage improvements are the roadway improvements that we are bringing to the site. I think it's very important to notice that both these are internal and external, right? They're perimeter roadways and internal. We are bringing all of these roadways that you see really, kind of the details pointed out here in kind of the pink color. Most importantly, we are being very careful not to make that connection to 84th. That was a site, a request by the neighborhood, and we're not making a roadway connection to the 84th. We are making improvements to Bradburn. I want to be sure and note, on the pedestrian side, sidewalks, curb, and gutters will happen on both sides of Bradburn with this application. We also get rid of the drainage ditches on both sides, so we're really able to address the pedestrian flow and roadway safety, and then again, the proposed and suggested changes to La Place Court. I do want to note here, and I'm sure we will talk about this in more detail, the La Place improvements are really off of our site, right? But we are making them in conjunction with suggested improvements from the city and other stakeholders, right? So it's not addressing something directly on our site, but we believe it's very important to make those infrastructure improvements. One, there's some challenges, the safety of the way that intersection meets today, right? The angle of that. And I think additionally, we want to be sure and address the issues with the drainage, where it goes today. So just to show, you can see here today, that 82nd and La Place, that will become a disconnected intersection. It will disconnect from Bradburn. It will terminate now in a cul-de-sac on 82nd, and that meets all city specs for fire, for turnaround, and that would be a paved road as well. And then please note that on La Place Court, it would be two ways north of 81st, right? So those are the changes that the stakeholders have looked at and suggested as the improvements to La Place Court. Bonnie's now going to talk specifically about the exceptions that we are requesting for the B1 neighborhood.
Included with in our ODP are a number of exceptions to city regulations. They've always been anticipated at Uplands in order to comply with the vision that was established in the PDP and provide much-needed housing within the city. Starting on the left side of this slide, in 2020, we amended the comprehensive plan. At that time, we discussed the benefits of increased housing diversity, providing a density transition between the single-family detached uses to the north and to the west, and multifamily uses to the northeast, as well as creating an opportunity to cluster housing while providing public land dedication and preserving view corridors. This has remained consistent as we processed the PDP in 2021, now as we present this neighborhood-specific ODP. Many of the requested exceptions are focused on providing that housing diversity, providing a density transition to neighbors, and clustering homes along that public land dedication. The city code also supports the need for exceptions. Uplands is zoned PUD and defined here. This zone district is specifically intended to integrate land use and site conditions as a unit, to reflect maximum design freedom, to more fully utilize the physical characteristics of the site through the reduction of lot size and absence of setback and bulk restrictions, to provide for diversification and flexibility in housing types, housing prices, and overall design, and to encourage innovative development. Our first exception deals with parking. Parking is defined in code and requires two off-street spaces for single-family detached and paired homes. These are provided for every home within two-car garages. Code requires an additional two driveway spaces for detached homes and one off-street space per three paired homes for guest parking. With this ODP, we propose to provide these guest spaces through a combination of off-street surface spaces and on-street parallel spaces. This does not reduce the quantity of parking spaces provided, but simply allows for these spaces to be provided in a different way. This exception improves upon the suburban, front-load, garage, and vehicle-dominated home type that requires full-length driveways and increases housing diversity. It encourages adequate parking for land uses without creating excess vacant parking, which is a specific code provision. And it utilizes on-street parking that adds natural friction to the street to slow traffic and encourage more pedestrian movements. This is further supported by the submitted parking study. For some detail on this, the little orange boxes you see on this plan on this sheet, these are the two-car garages that every single unit has. Here, in the blue spaces, we add the off-street surface spaces, which are sprinkled throughout the neighborhood. And here, we add the on-street spaces on Osceola in purple. These three parking types meet the total required parking counts for the neighborhood. In addition, 49 on-street spaces are provided along the north side of Bradburn. These are not provided within our parking counts. These are above and beyond those parking requirements for this neighborhood. Our next exception focuses on how we transition to adjacent uses. First, it's important to note that all perimeter setbacks are met or exceeded with the site plan. Identified here with the one in the northwest corner, we are requesting an exception to place the detention in the 35-foot setback off of 84th. This is a design standard for a single-family attached uses. Stormwater detention needs to be located at the lowest point of elevation to be fully functional. Due to the existing topography of the site, which steeply slopes down to 84th, the pond cannot be located within the neighborhood and still effectively capture onsite runoff. Landscaping is provided in both the detention pond and the landscape buffer south of 84th, meeting the intent of this screening while providing compatible land uses and maintaining aesthetic quality. Next, we have an exception to the west, northeast, and southeast property lines. Those are the locations here in the two. The city standard requires a three-foot, six-inch berm between the proposed homes and adjacent property lines or streets. Along Bradburn, we have excluded the berm in order to promote a pedestrian-friendly and activated streetscape with the front porches with sidewalk connections to the street. Along the west and northeast property lines, a combination of fencing, topography, and landscaping is used to create this transition. Specifically on the west, an existing six-foot fence is provided along the shared property line. A swell, as Marcus just showed you all, is proposed between the existing and proposed homes, capturing drainage from the proposed lots and diverting it to the detention pond and away from the existing lots to the west. Adding a berm in this location would negate this improvement. Landscaping is proposed to further provide screening. And then on the northeast, a berm already exists along the shared property line with the multifamily to the north. This transition is enhanced through a six-foot fence along the shared property line, along with enhanced landscaping. Next, we have requested a reduced setback between our internal off-street surface parking spaces, those were those blue spaces we just saw, and the paired homes. These are identified in the locations noted here with a 3. These parking spaces are perfectly located adjacent to homes to provide easy access for guest parking, and the majority of them are directly adjacent to and parallel to proposed garages. We are simply placing a parking use next to a parking use, negating the need for a Next, we have two exceptions tied to lot size. The first is tied to outdoor living areas specific to the single-family detached homes. This standard requires usable front porches and side or rear yard patios on 50% of the homes. With this neighborhood, we are providing usable front porches along with owner's deck and side decks to meet the side and rear patio requirements on 100% of the single-family detached tuck-under homes for a cumulative total of 400 square feet of usable area per home. The tuck-under home type was specifically used for this neighborhood to absorb grade, limit the amount of retaining walls, and better relate to the adjacent properties. The nature of this home type creates limited side yards with limited usability. A variety of porches and decks, which are identified in the top image here in red, are placed on the front elevation and provide additional articulation on these elevations as well as be used toward the open space. Additionally, Uplands is providing this for 100% of the tuck-under homes in place of the 50% required. Next, we have reduced on-lot setbacks. This again ties back to our original comp plan amendment where we discussed the need for increased housing diversity. In addition to meeting or exceeding the perimeter setbacks and dedicating the public land dedication, this exception allows us to provide more than double the required publicly accessible park internal to the neighborhood. This exception also aligns with citywide goals and policies related to water and housing. The reduced water lot sizes reduce the potential irrigated area of each lot, promoting responsible water use and lowering the community's overall water footprint. Additionally, the 2017 Housing Needs Assessment identified a drop in the ability for residents to become homeowners. These more compact homes on smaller lots provide additional housing options for residents at a lower relative cost than new single-family detached homes on large lots. And finally, we have a couple of exceptions tied to building design. On the paired homes, we are requesting that minor roofs have a 4-12 pitch instead of a 5-12 pitch. This applies only to the covered porches to accommodate egress window requirements above the porches and to shed roofs on one architectural style. So this is noted on the top-left image here. Next, we are requesting a garage depth of 22 feet that includes potential stair locations. This garage depth allows for 19 feet of clear depth for parking while still providing three feet for stairs, trash, and other storage. We are also requesting, in place of bay windows, we provide multiple plane breaks and gable-end treatments. This creates more dynamic architecture and streetscape solution while varying the overall massing of each home. And finally, materials. We have two exceptions tied to materials. First, in place of brick or stone-wrapped columns for second-story decks, we are proposing materials appropriate to the design of each front elevation. This helps to minimize the size of the columns and maximize the size of the outdoor living areas while creating a variety of distinct entry treatments. Second, we are providing an average of 30% masonry measured across all elevations in lieu of 30% per elevation. This allows us to place masonry where it is most impactful, especially at the front of homes along public spaces. This provides a safe percentage of masonry overall, but enhances those public-facing facades with no increase to the home costs. And with that, I believe Marcus has just one last slide for us.
And I don't know how long that's going to take, but it's five minutes until roll call. So I'd like to take a 10-minute break, go to roll call, and come back and convene.
Perfect.
Thanks.
Anybody that wants to go to roll call?
Seems like a very important person. I'll wait, yeah.
Everybody's here. Okay, thank you.
Of course, absolutely. Ladies and gentlemen, just to finish up here, our final few slides. Standards of approval, I just want to again acknowledge, we handed out a document and we submitted a very long narrative on how we comply with all 17 standards of approval. I want to specifically denote, though, that we believe we are in full compliance and conformance with the comprehensive plan, 2013 when we started, comp plan 2040 now as adopted, and the PDP. As you all saw, we have 82 units; we are exceeding the open space on this site. And I just must say, we believe this is reflective of great inclusive planning with the community and all the stakeholders. With that, again, we have a full team here. We are remarkably proud of this first neighborhood and the process that it has taken, and we would respectfully request your support for this ODP. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from either staff or developer? Councilor Seymour?
Thank you, Mayor Mayor. There was some concern in our packet regarding La Place Court and that Planning Commission had had some concerns about that. But then, it should be part of the public record because it was to all city councilors. It did not show up in this comment period, but it was to all city councilors, all staff regarding residents that are on La Place Court and that they had affirmed that they did want these changes made. So I think that email from those residents themselves, and I know head shaking is not admissible, but it seems that that clarified that issue. So I want to thank you for that email. There was a question, too, and I know this came up in the master ODP, is as far as capacities for the schools. I mean, we have three schools very, very close, four actually, then Shaw Heights Middle, Flynn, Crown Point, and then also the school, pillar of fire. And I'm wondering if those schools are in the same situation that Jefferson County schools are and where they are desperate for students.
Hi, thank you for your question. Our PDP was very specific on the school land dedication. All those requirements, it's either cash and lieu or land based on population. The preference at the time was cash and lieu. That is still the case now. Anecdotally, Westminster Public Schools has had declining populations, and so having more students attend those schools actually helps with their state financing, things like that.
Again, I do recall that there was a letter from them in the master ODP, too.
That's correct, yep.
Thank you. And then I want to qualify, too, that that exit onto Eighty-Fourth, because there, you know, a concern always from an emergency standpoint, that would be available, and that has been signed off by the fire department as far as access as well?
That is correct, sir. Yes, that was fully evaluated by fire as well, yes.
Okay, thank you. And then, do we know, no, I'll just enter this because there's concerns on this. Ford F-150 is eighteen point nine feet long, so with the twenty feet of parking, or the Ford one X, the XLT that has the, I don't know, it's a super cab, that's nineteen feet. So I just wanted to make sure that we had, that we can park trucks in those garages as well. And then also, as far as the density on this, this conforms to the 2013 and the 2040 water plan. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir, yes, and both the density plan as well and the water plan, yes.
And in general, the surrounding neighborhoods, as far as single-family homes, what is the average density in the Shaw Heights neighborhood?
Please.
Thank you.
The average density of Shaw Heights is anywhere from three and a half to four dwelling units per acre.
Okay, depending on
Just depending on where you draw the line.
configuration when you're on there, okay. And I think that was my last one, thank you.
Councilor Baker?
Yeah, mine are mostly for, well, the staff. As a rule, in good design, is it really preferable to have two entrances to a group of homes or one?
With the council's permission, I'd like to refer that question to our transportation engineer.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Brotem, council, city manager, Heath Klein, acting assistant city engineer and transportation engineer. So it really depends on the ability to serve the community with getting out of the neighborhood, and this design does allow that. The development team and the city staff, we did evaluate other access points to Bradburn and did not get to a point where one was achievable with the grades. And due to the community meetings and the input from the neighborhoods north of Eighty-Fourth Avenue, that is part, the reason why we went with the emergency access point and utility access point to Eighty-Fourth Avenue rather than going with a permanent access drive on that side.
So in other words, what you're saying is it would have been better to have two, but because of considerations on the site and, well, the desires of the neighbor, you lowered it to one and a half.
We evaluated it, and it works for this subdivision. And each subdivision, we evaluate based on the number of units and the ability to fight fires and serve with emergency. And this meets our requirements.
Okay, and this could be also, I mean, a question for you. There's only, don't know how much, maybe a third of this neighborhood that has access to a public street?
They have access, all the other homes have access to a alleyway that will have public access over the alley. So they all have access to public roadways. It's just not the right-of-way that we own. The development will maintain the alleyways, but there will be a public access easement over those alleys.
Okay, but that is quite unusual for our city, is it not? I mean, almost all the homes in Westminster, the lot and the garage has direct access to a public street?
Not all, and I'm not prepared to
I didn't say all, but the vast majority. Okay. Next thing is, where this plan tightens up the closeness of homes to each other, correct?
That'll be planned.
That is correct. The lots are generally about twenty-three hundred and fifty square feet.
Okay, so basically, side to side, building to building, what does that, what does that really reduce it to in terms of how far are they apart?
Okay, I'd like to ask the applicant to come address that question, please.
The minimum side-to-side spacing is fifteen feet.
Okay, and if there wasn't an exception, what does the city require?
I don't have that standard in front of me.
Okay. Someone else to jump in?
Seven and a half foot side yards, fifteen feet between buildings.
So then this, well, this only tightens it up a foot?
Sounds like it.
Okay. Next is where are the fire hydrants going to be located, and how is the fire department going to get access to them?
Generally, the fire department did review this and did concur with the fire hydrant locations, the street width and the ability to access all buildings.
Could we have the fire department speak about that?
Yes, sir, I believe representatives of the fire department are here.
Welcome.
Good evening, council, Dick Menard, fire chief. Yes, sir, we had our, it was reviewed by our plan reviewer, Scott Wimmer, and our team, and it meets the standard for access and hydrants.
Okay. Could you give me, like, I mean, a sample of it? Because what I am knowledgeable of is where fire hydrants are in most of their cities.
Right.
And they're on a public street and they're placed so far apart.
Right.
So where would they be in this neighborhood?
Well, that's hard to say where they'd be in this neighborhood without seeing the plan, but typically, fire hydrants are not more than five hundred feet apart, so two-hundred-fifty feet in any direction. So about five hundred feet, and then on the corners is a good access point. We tend to, you know, it depends on direction of travel, access, that type of thing, so.
So basically, if you were fighting a fire in some of the houses on the western edge of this property, where would the fire hydrants be and how would the fire departments hook up their hose and bring it to the side of the fire?
Well, one thing I would like to mention is that all of these homes are going to be sprinkled with residential sprinkler systems.
Right, all of the homes in Westminster have had
Yep, since 2017.
sprinkler systems for the last
Yep.
five years, I think.
Yep, since 2017. So if we're looking at the western edge of this, when you enter the property and you make that left turn, if I'm going to make a right into that back street, which is a thirty-foot width is what I just read on the plan, which is, gives us proper access, there would be a hydrant on that corner, most likely, and then probably one on either end. But that's, again, a guesstimate. That's typically where we put them, is on the corners. If we need one in the middle, there'd be one in the middle of the street.
Okay, thank you, chief. I appreciate the help.
You're welcome.
And then, for the parking, I don't know if this would be our staff or, okay, the developer. Specifically, I guess I got confused trying to read it. But for, as it stands with our current rules, you have to have two parking spaces in addition to, I mean, the garages for single-family homes. How much does this reduce that requirement?
So the parking requirement is met overall. The total required would be two-hundred-and-fifty-five. This includes eighty-eight off-street for the single-family attached and fifteen guest spaces, and seventy-six off-street for the single-family detached in the driveway, and seventy-six enclosed, so two in the driveway and two in enclosed. And so each home does have the two enclosed spaces in the garage, but the homes don't have driveways. And so the auxiliary parking spaces that are planned by the applicant would be on-street and off-street in the locations that they described. But I can refer more detail from the applicant to you.
And this is probably one for the applicant. It is obviously, I mean, a pedestrian-friendly neighborhood, but are there any destinations for really pedestrians outside of this?
Well, I think one of the things we have struggled with for a long time in talking about this site is that it is not safe today because there are not sidewalks. It's not knitted together with the rest of the city. So you see today, for instance, Bradburn needs to have sidewalks installed on both sides instead of the drainage ditches. That will take you to Lowell, it'll take you to the schools, it'll take you to the large nine and ten-acre parks that will be on parcel A. We think it fully connects you to the rest of the mixed-use community that will be in Upland. So yes, I think there are great destinations. The other thing I would note is the PLD, sir, the reason these houses are closer together is because we're doing more open space. So we're doing an acre and a half park and then two, almost two-point-five acres of PLD that will be planned by the city. So they connect you directly to parks that are immediately adjacent to this neighborhood.
Okay, do they have any of the retail or any of the, really, I mean, the commercial destinations?
Right, and just that would be on parcel A, you are correct, sir, not on this site, as is consistent with the comprehensive plan that calls for low residential density.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you.
Councilor Nubell?
Thank you for the thorough presentation, because I would say I was crossing questions off my list as we're going through slides. And Counselor Seymour also hit several of them. So I had just an overall question regarding the exceptions and what they are most similar to. I mean, this, so this site's not the T-Mund designation, correct?
It is not T-Mund, you are correct.
Are these exceptions more consistent with that type of use?
Sure.
I would say they're kind of a transition between a T-Mund setback and a more traditional front-load single-family. It's kind of finding that balance between the two, since this location is surrounded by a little bit lower intensity uses.
Okay. For staff, I know we have the connections project that's just hop, skip, and a jump down the street that way. I don't even know what direction I'm pointing, but is this kind of, it's a very similar product type, is that right?
Generally, very similar.
And then, because even the, it's a single-family tuck-under product
Exactly.
to deal with a pretty sloped site?
I would say the two properties are very similar in that respect. They're oddly shaped, their remnants or leftovers, probably considered unbuildable at some point in the past. And in order to work with that grade, you would either have to level out, build tall retaining walls, or work with the grade, as we've encouraged this applicant to do with tuck-under garages and alley-loaded houses and duplexes.
So since we've, we have a project that seems pretty, like, it's been constructed, it seems like it's doing well even with the soils and the grade, you feel like that same application can be applied to the site with respect to the grade?
I would agree with that, yes.
Okay. I have a question for, I'll just say, for the applicant team, I would also just, the garages do sound a little tight with, I don't know if everyone will have a large vehicle, but I would just consider how tight that seems to be.
Great. We understand, we did, we did measure that for most, like, Suburbans and F-150s, but you are correct, it's a little tighter. But we did do that analysis, so that vehicle could park within the garage itself.
Okay. Ostensibly stairs might be on the other, on one side versus another, I don't know.
That is correct, yeah.
Okay. The other question I have is for the fire department. There was a comment earlier from the public that there was concern about this being more, more potential for a fire hazard with the spacing of the homes. I'm just curious if you can comment on that.
On, I'm sorry, the what?
The spacing of the homes, and wondering if you can, does that make any more of a fire hazard versus any other type of single-family home that's in the city?
Well, the one thing I heard earlier is that it's only been reduced by one foot from our city standard. And with the fifteen feet, no, there's not a concern, especially with sprinkled homes.
Okay.
Yeah, not concerned.
Okay, thank you. That was all for fire, sorry. I had so many things crossed off that I'm now looking what's left. I think overall, I just, this has not much bearing, but I think there was some comment about just the types of homes that would be here. Is there any idea of what price point these homes would be at in general?
Yeah, councilor, I think we're, as you can imagine, in those kind of very initial sizes, as you saw in the architecture, the, it shows kind of the size of those homes. We have them in other markets, right, where you're trying to see some, you know, across all price points, four hundreds to six hundreds somewhere in those. So we don't know that pricing yet. I will say that we have tried intentionally, by size of the lot and size of the home, to be more attainable by design. So we're not avoiding that question, we just don't know it yet. But that's certainly the price point. And I would just note, the lot size and the amenity package is really the larger community, so we think we're able to, these aren't as large a lots, right, so we hope they're more attainable by design.
The HOA fee that they might have to take on, particularly with all those alleys, is that?
Councilor, that is a fine question. I will ask that. I'm sorry, I do not know the answer to that. I'll look to our team. I think we just have initial thoughts on that. There will be, I will certainly answer that, an HOA for this neighborhood that certainly would have those fees. Matt, the question was, I'll just repeat it from the councilor, was the anticipated kind of HOA fees or what you see in similar communities on this type of site?
Hi, councilmember. So it's a range, right, on what do we offer? So a typical single-family detached community where a homeowner is manicuring their own front yard, backyard, seems to be in the market here is more going to be in the forty to fifty-dollar-a-month range. Whenever we're offering front yard, full yard maintenance through the HOA like we plan to here, it seems it seems to be more in the $100 to $125 a month range. Obviously, we don't have those budgets set at this point in time, but that's our current expectation. One comment on the garages as well, just as a data point, across the front range, we're almost exclusively building 20-foot-depth garages. Westminster requires 22 feet deep, so while I certainly understand and respect your concern, and I drive a large truck personally, I, I believe they'll be, uh, accessible for, for most homeowners.
Okay. And I would, I just wanted, thank you. I, I just wanted to make the point really to say, I mean, if this is, if these homes are around $600,000 with current interest rates, you know, the mortgage payment is about $4,300 a month, which is crazy to, you know, it sounds crazy to a lot of us, but I, you know, I think there's some... Well, I would love to see a more attainable product. I mean, obviously, interest rates have a huge impact on that. And, um, I just, you know, when I hear community members complaining that there may be, because of the density, more theft or crime, or some type of negative impact to the surrounding community, I mean, these are really quite expensive. And, uh, the household incomes to be able to afford this type of home is rather high.
If I may add to that, uh, since rates have really jumped significantly here in the last 12 to 18 months, you've seen a huge shift in new housing sales compared to resales. And that's because the new home-building market is able to buy down a homeowner's rate. So frequently, we're, we're doing that. We're actually locking in a 5.5 or a 5.99 rate for our customers when, when the resale market is paying 7, 7.5%. So certainly sensitive to the concerns you just mentioned. We're doing everything we can to combat it, frankly.
Well, it does make, I have a mortgage calculator on my computer right now, and it says about $4,400 for a $600,000 home at 7.9. And when I switched it to 5.9, it went down to 3,600. It's crazy how impactful that is. Okay, thank you, um, for answering all my questions.
Counselor Newman?
A lot of my questions have been asked and answered, um, whether it be on the presentation or on the DICE. So I'll go until, uh, some of my comments. The garage size is an issue for me. I don't mind the, the parking spaces. I feel like we have adequate amount. But I'm not on board with the garage size, because I currently live in a townhome, which doesn't fit a vehicle, which has an HOA, which has stipulations that says the can can't be in, the, the recycle bin and the trash can cannot be out with, within a 24-hour period. And so if I'm reducing my, um, garage size, I'm taking up guest parking spaces or off, off-street parking spaces with now my vehicle. That's taking up the, um, space that could be utilized within the home of two garage, of two, uh, two vehicles. So I, so moving it down to 19, um, is very concerning, because then now we're shifting where people are parking and how they are utilizing that garage space. 19 is, I, I get that we're moving into a standard, um, space. Mine is currently 22, but it also has, um, an offset for, um, for housing the, the recycle bins and trashcans. And with that, mine is the only unit in ours that had that concept. So, um, reducing it, uh, is a problem, because most of these, um, townhomes, uh, have only one person, which is fine. But if you have more than one person, now you're playing musical cards on trying to fit in vehicles in your, um, in your living space. So, um, I, I don't mind, all of the exceptions were adequately, adequately addressed for me, except for the garage space. I'm not on board with that.
Great.
Counselor Baker, we have 13 people waiting to tell us their thoughts. Um, are you okay with waiting until they speak?
Sure.
Okay, let's, uh, get with our list.
The first speaker is Karen Calaviti.
Welcome.
Thank you. Karen Calaviti, 9940 West Cliff Parkway. I haven't been to all these public meetings, but I've been to enough to know that every time there's a public meeting, most of the people in the public do not want this project. So this idea that they've engaged in 140 meetings or whatever, it's like, well, that's great. And, um, they've been presenting at people, not presenting to people. And, and the idea for the high density of these, of the whole Uplands project was to give different housing types that related to income types that would be available to people, especially within Westminster. And as Sarah has brought up, you know, if you're paying a monthly payment of $3,600 to $4,400, dollars, that's not really affordable or, you know, meaningful to most people in Westminster that might be looking for this kind of home. This is, these homes are not being designed to facilitate the needs of the Westminster community. These homes are being designed and pushed onto the community to meet the needs of Varday, uh, investment firm. That's, that's the bottom line of this, this whole situation. And I find it distressing that we would give up rights to have proper design and proper density on all of this land, just so that we could accommodate Varday's desire to make a lot of money. And that's what this boils down to. It's, it's been this way since day one, but now it's even more apparent when you talk about what the reality of these, what these homes are really going to cost and what the purpose for okaying this whole Uplands plan was, which I never agreed with in the first place. But the idea was that it was going to make in-the-middle housing available to people within the community and some within the rest of Colorado. And this is, this is not what this is accomplishing at all. I find this whole thing offensive. And in the way they talk about community meetings all the time, it's like, yeah, they presented at community meetings and pretty much ignored anything that was brought up, except for, well, how can we get away with this, given what the community is talking about?
Thank you.
The next speaker is Brendan, or, I'm sorry, Brenda Archuleta.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you.
You can move the microphone so we can hear you. Thanks.
My, uh, my, I, I have lived on La Place Court for 44 years. I live at 8172. Uh, one of my neighbors, um, Terri Hilgendorf, she wanted to come tonight, but she wasn't able to. So she asked me, she put this in my door and asked me to read it tonight. She also sent, uh, this to the city council and the mayor through email. And it says, "On July 25th, the planning commission voted to recommend the Uplands development project eliminating the cul-de-sac on La Place Court, which was planned, because as Mr. Pakner stated, the existing condition hasn't been very safe." In the meeting minutes, "During the public comments segment of the meeting, two residents who do not live on La Place Court complained about the loss of access to Bradburn. Two residents with driveways on La Place Court explained the safety issue related to the blind spot at the top of the steep hill and entrance and exit from driveways. Commissioner Carpenter made the motion to recommend the Uplands ODP to city council without the La Place safety improvements. The council voted four to two in favor. This was a shock to the families who have driveways on La Place Court, as we already have a safety issue with drivers cutting through on La Place and disregarding the one-way status of the street. Since the meeting, I have spoken to the seven residents who have driveways on La Place Court. We ask that the city council approve the Uplands ODP reinstating the, the La Place disconnect." And then she lists, uh, eight people that live on La Place Court. And I'm at the, I don't know if you want me to name them. There's eight neighbors, in, in other words. "If there is any doubt, I urge members of the council to please drive onto La Place Court. The safety issue will be obvious. Respectfully yours, Terri Hilgendorf." And I agree that the cul-de-sac is a good idea, because I've always been concerned about the traffic. People speed up the hill 50 miles per hour because they know they shouldn't. And, uh, even though, and on Bradburn, it's 25 miles per hour, but people speed up and down it. And, um, so I'm in, in favor of it, along with these other neighbors.
Thank you, thank you so much.
The next speaker is Nancy Travis.
Welcome.
I live right by the middle school, Shaw Heights on Circle Drive. I've never been to any of these meetings, but all of this development I know is going to affect the street I live on. And I've lived there since 89. I have been in Shaw Heights, Westminster, since 69. I must admit, I do not like what I'm seeing. If you're telling me this is affordable housing, you're blowing smoke. And I don't know what you're smoking, but let me tell you, my kids make some good money. They do have their own houses, not no $700,000 house. The houses are going to go up. I know this. I know what I paid for my house in 89. Let me tell you, house, three, four houses away from me can sell for $400,000 to $500,000. I'm sorry, that house isn't even worth $50,000, $60,000. I see the traffic on Circle Drive. Where are these people coming out of Bradburn? They're going to connect to Lowell, they're going to connect to Oakwood, that connects to Circle Drive. The people, the parents of the kids at Shaw Heights Middle School, let me tell you, I'm surprised I've yet to see a kid killed. Those parents don't know how to drive. I have a hard time backing out of my driveway, let alone these parents think that my driveway is their turnaround spot. They're too lazy to go around a block. They get mad at me, or even my husband, when he was alive, when we tell them, "Our driveway is not for you to pull in to back out. This is private property. It is not a public street. The street, yes, but don't drive into my driveway or into my yard to turn around." And I just see a lot more disrespect. I'm going to see more crime? This is not what I live here for. And I don't feel that I, a senior, should be pushed out of my house that I own. And if you think people can afford a $700,000 house and that is affordable, I have grandkids that are looking to be able to move out. They're looking at an apartment. It's going to cost you, son, $2,000 a month. That's just to live. That don't count entertainment, food, your vehicle, this and that. It's a disgrace what this country has come to. And if you guys can approve for people to live in a $700,000 house, I feel sorry for your grandkids, your great-grandkids, because we are ruining this country. And I'm actually glad I'm starting to come to these. I never have until tonight. And what I'm seeing here, if we thought 9/11 was bad, this is a disgrace. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Suzanne Wright.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you for giving me the, uh, this opportunity. I'm going to start at the end, and I'm going to ask the city council to please vote no on the planning commission proposal to keep La Place Court as it is and approve the original Uplands design, and this is why. The current La Place Court configuration makes it the most dangerous residential street in Westminster, based on geography and blatant disregard of one-way streets and excessive speed by motorists taking the shortcut to north, to points north on Lowell, points west on 80th. And about the geography, because of the steepness on both sides of the hill that is La Place Court, no one can see what's coming at them until they're at the top, and then it can get dicey. Because motorists know they're in the wrong, illogically, they speed. And by that, I mean, it can be 40, 50 miles an hour in either direction. I've lived on this court street for 42 years. I've seen thousands of cars speed in both directions and observed some that do not bother to stop either at Oakwood or at Bradburn Drive. They just keep on going, they're reckless, and there's a lot of them. The Uplands development with entry and exit onto Bradburn Drive and on-street parking possibly limiting visibility a bit. And in seeing the presentation tonight that you're going to have, front-facing houses, any kid on a bike is going to be in danger, um, because they don't stop. They, they speed up Bradburn either direction, because they're either heading to Lowell or they're coming west, and they come up La Place Court, and, um, it's just a mess. These people do not respect traffic laws, and they'll wreak the same havoc that they do on La Place Court. The original Uplands design for La Place Court with no access to Bradburn Drive is perfect. No outlet for speeding motorists. The design means necessary changes to entry and exit from La Place Court part of the neighborhood. The people unhappy with those changes do not live on this street, they do not deal with the traffic issues, they will not be inconvenienced in any serious way by a cul-de-sac. If a fire truck can make a turn on a cul-de-sac, so can a snowplow, a delivery truck, trash service vehicles, and none of these vehicles will be using that cul-de-sac very often. I guess that's all I have to say, and I thank you for allowing me this time.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Robert Wright.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Bob Wright. I live on, uh, La Place Court and would like to speak in favor of the proposed conversion of the street into, into a two-way street with a cul-de-sac. I have serious concerns about the double, doubly one-way configuration because it is used as a shortcut, as was mentioned, with drivers speeding and going the wrong way on one, on a one-way street. A couple weeks ago, I was crossing the street after getting my mail. My mailbox is on the other side of the street. So I was proceeding back to my home, and I looked up, and there was a car coming toward me just a few feet away, going about 50 miles an hour, I'd say, and I froze because I didn't know what to do. I sort of felt like a goalie, uh, defending against a, uh, penalty kick. Am I going to go this way? Am I going to go that way? And I could visualize I would go this way, and the driver would veer that way and wipe me out. And it was, uh, terrifying. And it was a terrifying experience. Thankfully, the person at the last minute veered and came pretty close to me, but it didn't hit me. So to me, crossing the street is like taking my life in my own hands. And as was mentioned, there is a lot of traffic. I'm 5'9", and anybody less than that would have even less warning because the visibility is not there. And our pets, who are probably a foot or two feet, would have no chance at all. Several years ago, our daughter turned into her driveway, and she was mowed into by a car coming up the high hill on the wrong side of the street at a high speed. The driver got a ticket, and his response was, "I was late to work, and I had to get there quick," and as if it justified his speed and is going the wrong way on a one-way street. So I'd ask the counselors to vote against the elimination of the cul-de-sac, and I think it might even save somebody's life.
Thank you.
The next, I'm sorry, the next speaker is Melanie Noakes.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor McNally, Mayor Potem, and counselors. My name is Melanie Noakes. My mother is Laura Noakes Lang. She lives at 8150 La Place Court for about 55 years. I grew up there. I'm here because I want to help my mom. Her health doesn't allow her to get up and speak in front of people. And I also know this is a significant issue for the people who live there. I grew up there, I understand the traffic issues. I was there the day that Robert Wright's daughter got hit by a car. So it's one of those things where the street is, for those who don't know, it's shaped about like this. That's the hill, and the cars go over the hill like this, and you can't see what's on the other side. So just in case, that's helpful. And so in 1975, my mother, along with the other neighbors in the neighborhood, had a traffic study done in coordination with the police department because they were seeing a significant number of traffic over it, and they're saying there are 4,000 cars per day going over that hill. Seems crazy, 1975, that much traffic could be going over the hill, but apparently that was the case. Earlier tonight, they're mentioning cut-through traffic between 84th and Bradburn in the neighborhood, and they're very concerned about that, and they've cut off that cut-through traffic. This is the concern of the neighborhood, right? That there's going to be cut-through traffic using that hill because that access will be there. And so we know, as the years have gone by, more and more people have taken advantage of that hill. They know there's no traffic, or there's limited traffic because it's one-way. They come along, they cut over from Bradburn over to Oakwood, it cuts off a couple stop signs, makes their life a little easier, it just scares the life out of everybody else who lives there. So the residents of La Place Court worked with the city for two years, back in 1975, to come up with a plan to resolve what they considered at that time a very dangerous situation created by high-speed, high-volume on a residential street. And what they came up with was the best solution at the time, and that was the one-way solution over the hill. People have decided to ignore that signage over the years, and they're speeding to avoid getting a ticket. We also know the police don't have the opportunity to be there as often and frequently to observe that, so the residents are using extreme caution. There was a time when the street actually had two lanes going over the hill. Accidents occurred. They've now reduced it to one lane going over the hill, and now people come over the hill not knowing which way to go, and they either drive on one side of the lane, they're driving on the middle, drive down the right side, and now when you're coming up the rights, you're going the right way over the hill, you don't know which way to go because people could literally be coming right at you. Because the way the hill is, you're coming up one way, they're coming up the other, and you don't know whether they're going to be coming at you. So you do use extreme caution, and the concern is, with more residents living right at the bottom of the hill, it's going to increase the likelihood that people are going to be coming over that hill the wrong way because they will be living on the side that is against the one-way. So if that makes sense? Okay, not yes, perfect. All right. So there is an opportunity here for a developer who is offering to fix this issue that is existing. It's something that the neighborhood is embracing, for the most part. The cul-de-sac is currently on vacant land and was resolved problems the neighborhood has had for a long time. The, several of the neighbors have had conversations, obviously, they've shown up to have, be here tonight to represent what they are interested in having, which is that cul-de-sac in place. The neighbors have had that conversation, several are here. They, they have surveyed each other, they've talked to each other, and there's, at this time, two families who are against it, and they are the two families who are in 82nd who will have a slight variance to how they currently access their homes due to this cul-de-sac being changed, but they don't deal with the safety issues because they are, they aren't on the same road. That's about all I have. Appreciate your time, and thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Linda Grabiel. The next speaker is Chris Durham.
My time's up, you heard, come on down.
Welcome.
Thank you. And I want to say thank you for your thoughtful questions. This affects my life, so I really appreciate your thoughtful questions on this matter. As my neighbors have addressed regarding La Place Court and the cul-de-sac, I want to say yes. I live there, I'm at 8171 La Place. And so I encourage you, please, to have that be put into effect. One element that I would like to see additionally put in is I have concern about police and fire getting access to the homes, though. I spoke with Heath over here, the planning commission. He has some ideas, but, I mean, otherwise, it's like fire needs to zigzag through the neighborhood to get to the home if it's totally cut off by this cul-de-sac. So I'm a social worker, I'm not a road planner, I don't know these things, so, but I have this emergency concern as well. Regarding the development overall, I'd like to put the thought, density doesn't create good neighbors. I think we kind of, when you think about it, that, for me, it very much resonates. I would not want to be able to stick my hand out my house window and shake hands with my neighbor. It's kind of what we're talking about with this level of density. And I encourage you all, please, to drive by this area if you haven't already, or do it again, and take a look at the number of housing that they're looking to put in because the housing is also going to be on the other side of Bradburn. Right now, we're just talking about the north side, but the south side project is coming too. And that's not fitting in really with the rest of what the Westminster feel is. And in their presentation, the developer is talking about that they said about having affordable housing is one of their elements. Well, I'm sorry, what world is $600,000 affordable? But they also made the argument that, oh, we're going to create this more dense housing because that's a way for us to make it more affordable. I'm sorry, you can't have both arguments. Those two don't wash together. So please, take, take a look at this seriously, because once it's done, as we all know, we can't undo it. Something that was said was that there's going to be 88 off-street parking, and I'm not clear, are they saying that's like you can fit besides the parking with the housing? Are they saying 88 places to park along the road? Like, in what world is that good? I mean, there needs to be some serious judgment calls about, about these things. So again, right now, we aren't just talking about the B1 parcel. B2 is coming real soon, and this affects our immediate life. And I, I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Dawn Voak.
Welcome.
It's good to be here. Good to be here. I had a lot of notes about the cul-de-sac, and I'm against it because it's right at the bottom of the hill. It will collect water as a pond, and ice and snow will collect there. Now, I live on 82nd Avenue. Now, to get out of my drive, my street, I'd have to go into the cul-de-sac, go up the hill, which is ice and snow in the winter, and how do I get over the hill? Because it's very icy, and I have only two houses on 82nd Avenue. But we both are concerned with trying to get over the hill. The second factor I have noted here is what is this cul-de-sac made out of? Does anybody know? Does anybody seen any picture of it? Where does my friend Marcus to give me a picture of what this cul-de-sac looks like? How high is the cul-de-sac? Let's say, for example, we live at the bottom of the hill, that somebody comes over the hill and doesn't realize there's a cul-de-sac, crashes into the cul-de-sac, incurring injuries to the people. Now, if we have a smart lawyer, what's he going to do? He's going to go and say, "Let's sue that city of Westminster for building a barrier in the middle of an open road." And so he'll get a judge, who's very likable and liberal, and say, "Well, yeah, the city is against the law, and well, we should sue the city to get some bucks out of them. They're rich. They're allowing a lot of things to happen." The other concept, remember that, keep that in mind as you're thinking. The other concept I have, there's going to be 160 cars coming out of that one driveway every single day. They got people going to school, they're going to the market, they're going to work. Now, what do we have in Bradburn? We have a little bit of a traffic, traffic jam, I would say. So one outlet, I don't think is the proper, proper thing to have. Now, garages, let's look at the garage situation. Two-car garages, right? Okay, I go down Oakwood a lot, going up to 92nd out of my house and so on. How many garages have cars in them? Maybe 1%, 2%? You have traffic stacked all over the street, and there's maybe four or five people have a car to one house. We're going to have the same problem here, and people are going to have to park either on my street or on Bradburn to get into their particular concept. Look at the traffic. If you have seen the traffic up by Wishbone and that complex there, that parking lot and the streets, they're full. I almost got run over going to the Wishbone one day, trying to get there. So I think the cul-de-sac is not the answer. I think that we need to know what it's made of, how it's made, and will it be available to all people that can get, we are the only ones on the bottom of the hill. So therefore, I say we reject this proposal, cul-de-sac, until we know more about it. You people don't know exactly what it's made of. I'm almost not certain that the fire department knows whether they get their truck turned around or not, but that's something we need to look at. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Charles Ragsdale.
Welcome.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any way that I could get the picture of the development with the park and all that sort of thing? The one that shows the numbers down in the little corner down here?
I don't know if I can control that. Was it this one or the one, just the neighborhood plan?
Back up. There was one that, that one or the next one, I don't remember. There was one that showed like 13.32 down in the corner or something like that.
You might be talking about... This one?
No, there was...
I'm not sure. I'll put the neighborhood plan up, that's probably the closest I can find. I'm not sure which one you're looking for.
That's fine. I have a question in, in how one goes about calculating the number of units that are acceptable in this, in this location. It seems to me like on one of the maps that, excuse me, I'm Charlie Ragsdale, I live at 8120 Oceola Street, Westminster, Colorado, 80031. Directly across the water tanks from this, this facility here, or from this development here. On one of the slides, it showed 13.32, and I think that was the acreage. The total piece is about 16 acres, and the amount that they have dedicated to the city is two and a half, three acres or something like that. That gets us to the 13.32 acres, I think. And since we can't find the, the thing here, I, I don't know that that 13.32 is exactly the number. But if you take 13.32 times 5, that's 66.6. They're at a proposing 82 acre, or 82 units on this 13-acre property. That far exceeds the density of the, of the zoning, as I understand it. So I'd like for you to take a look at that before you approve this. I'd, I'd like to get a calculation on whether they really are in compliance, or whether they're taking the 16 acres, which is the whole piece of property, and saying that they should get five per acre for the 16 acres instead of the 13 acres that they're developing. That's one. The second thing is, I still have a real problem with only one entrance to that, that development. And here's the reason why. We heard the fireman, fire department say that, well, all of the houses in Westminster are sprinkled now, or are supposed to be sprinkled. But if you get a roof fire in a bunch of houses that are that close together, and it's spreading roof to roof, those sprinklers aren't going to do you a bit of good. They're sprinkling inside the house. They're not sprinkling the roofs. And if you can't get multiple fire trucks in there to fight the fire, that's going to spread through the whole neighborhood without, without much effort. The third point I'd like to make is, and I apologize to my neighbors on La Place Court, by putting in that cul-de-sac at the bottom of La Place Court and Bradburn, you're taking away the north access to our neighborhood, basically. There is no place else that we can access the city properties but us all the way across our, our neighborhood. So we do access Bradburn on occasion. We do it legally by coming down the one-way street in the right direction and making a turn onto Bradburn to go to Lowell. I can guarantee you that when we get to Lowell, there's going to be a five-minute wait before we can get out. At least a five-minute wait. So the traffic there is not conducive, or is not conducive with this type of an entry and access and egress from their development. There needs to be an entrance on the north, and they say, "Oh, well, we've got an emergency exit, entrance and exit up there." That doesn't mean a thing because anytime you have an emergency exit or, or that sort of thing, it's chained off, or it's marked in a way that you cannot access it. And if I'm sitting on the north side of that property and the fire is on the south side, I want to get out of there. And so I need another exit to get out, and I can't go through the, where the... And I can't go through the, where the apartments are. I've gotta come out at that north gate to escape. So that's the three things I'd like for you to consider, and to consider them before you approve this project, because I really think that they're in excess of their zoning.
Mayor, before the speaker steps back, can we, can you pull up slide 38? I'm just curious so that when we get to our questions, if that's the proper slide? Because on slide 38, it shows proposed ODP, and it has the 13.32. Yeah, that one. Is that the one you're talking about? Because that has the 13...
That's right here. Sorry, it's really small, that one, so it's 13.32.
Is it on 14? Because that shows a map.
Yeah, it's with the map.
Just wanna make sure we're asking about the right thing.
Sorry, guys. Was that 13.32?
Yes.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, you, okay, then, let me look here. Then, then you're saying that's on the, on the B2?
Yep.
Okay. I'm sorry.
That's okay. We're glad you asked questions.
That, that's, that's why I needed that map up there, because I knew that I remembered that 13.32, which was the develop, developable acreage, but it was on the wrong map. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Ann Ragsdale.
Welcome. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and all the guests tonight. This project, we're looking now at the La Place Court exit from our neighborhood. And I really feel sorry for our La Place Court neighbors when they have problems with people using the La Place Court going the wrong way. Rather than assume that closing it off and putting the cul-de-sac on there, maybe what we need to do is make sure that the people who are coming, and again, from this development, should it go forth, coming up over the hill are fined. Maybe the police need to sit there for a little bit longer. Maybe there needs to be more directions as far as the road signs are concerned. But we're not just concerned about the people in La Place Court, because our whole neighborhood uses 81st and La Place Court to go north from our neighborhood. You cannot get out on Lowell, because as you all know, Lowell is busy from 24 hours a day practically. That would be my concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is John Palmer.
Welcome.
Thank you. Real quick, I'd like to dovetail onto both what Charlie Ragsdale spoke about, as well as Dr. Vogt, in concerns, a lot of concerns. La Place Court, when I grew up, La Place Court was a public street. You could go either way on it. Through whatever means happened back in the 70s, be it dollars, influential people with the council, it became one-way, each direction from the top of the hill. Seems to me like the easy fix for this is to just open it up and make it a public street going two ways. Now, if you put La Place Court, if you put the cul-de-sac in there, you're cutting off or you're, you're causing a problem for the first responders. So all these people that are on the south side of the hill, God forbid they need an ambulance, a first responder, they're gonna have to, like these people have talked about, drive through the neighborhood, increasing the response time. So I, I hope all you people that want this understand you're putting your lives in danger with this. Yes, you are. Okay. And again, we're talking about a problem. Where's the data? Where's the data of all these people driving the wrong way? Do we have that data, or is that just their perception? And I have a feeling it's a lot of perception. Bradburn and Lowell, when will these street upgrades be made that they keep talking about? Will that be prior to them breaking ground over there? Because that sure seems like it would be a most important part of this. Then they talk about the exit onto 84th and drive-through traffic. They don't, they don't want to put an exit over there because of drive-through traffic. But yet, we want to take Shaw Boulevard out of play so that it creates a bottleneck at 84th and Lowell. I've talked about that. And what's gonna happen is, the drive-through traffic is now gonna be coming down Shaw, going up Circle Drive, coming across 84th, or circling around up to, to Bradburn. Not a solution. They talk about the price of these homes, $600,000, and you came up with a monthly mortgage, Councilor Namela. Let's add on that .50 metro tax district that you people approved, on top of their monthly payment, on top of their HOA dues. $600,000 house, that's an additional, what, $3,000 a month in property taxes, above and beyond Adams County taxes and your school district taxes? That's a pretty big bite. Off-street parking. They keep talking about this off-street parking. Where is it, and, and how wide are the streets? I mean, obviously, we're talking Oceola and Bradburn. If the streets are not more than 32 feet, there shouldn't be off-street parking. And the reason I say that is, up at Skyline Greens, up off of 88th and Lowell, there are four major streets. 88th Court, Oceola Street, 88th Drive, and Mead Street. 88th Drive, both sides, it's a 28-foot street. Both sides of the street have no parking signs. Now, when those people moved in, you could park there, but for some reason, the city decided that that's not appropriate any longer. Oceola Street, one side, again, 28 feet, no parking on one side of all the streets. Same with 88th Court, 28-foot street, no parking on one side. Mead Street, the widest of them, is 32 feet. No parking on one side of the street again. So I think we need to define what they're calling off-street parking and how wide that is, because obviously, it would need to be in excess of 32 feet. The fire concern, like, like Mr. Ragsdale said, you know, grant, granted, we're gonna have sprinklers inside the house, but that doesn't protect the outside of the house. That doesn't protect the cars. That doesn't protect the cars in the driveway, the, the potential causes of fires from EV vehicles. The sprinklers are inside the house, not the garage, not the exterior, not the patios. That's a problem. Again, with the street widths, we need to define what the street width is on Oceola and Bradburn, and again, when those upgrades will be, be made. And again, it needs to be made before they even break ground over there. Otherwise, there will be problems guaranteed, as well as the problem it's gonna create at Bradburn and Lowell. If you've driven that neighborhood right now, it's a bear to get off of Bradburn onto Lowell, going either direction with the cars coming over the top of Lowell. Safety hazard. You're gonna put another, what, 100 cars? 150 cars on Bradburn? Not looking good. And again, I live in that neighborhood. None of you people do. You don't deal with it on a daily basis, weekly basis. You don't see what happens over there. I do. I live it. I talk to my neighbors. I understand it. You need to, to really stop and take a look at this. Go up there and sit, and not just for the peak traffic hour. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Mary Berg.
Thank you for giving us the five minutes. I thought it was only two. I want to start with knowing that you are in a, a, an important position, and you do look at the benefits and the negatives, okay? But I think it's really important for you to really know you're gonna be affecting tens of thousands of lives. So, so it's very important for you to slow down, number one, because we shouldn't be pushed tonight to accept this, or you shouldn't be pushed to be up, put on the spot like that. From the Vardy home website, it says that Vardy means value in Swedish, and it applies this for the most attractive opportunities globally. Vardy currently manages 12 billion assets with teams in North America, Europe, and Asia Pacific focused on corporate and trade credit, real estate, financial services, diversified private credit, oil and gas, and other industries. So, we know that this is about money. And everything, everybody's spoken so far is about how tight it is, okay? So number one, the plan has to go back to the drawing board, even though these wonderful people work really hard in trying to do what they're told to do, okay? I mean, you know, to put in and make a lot of money, okay? So bottom line is, it's not realistic to, to put in, because at this site, there's 82 units. Existing right now in that area are 18. So if you divide that, that's at least five times more people in, in one tiny little area. Now, the frontage is, and they become squares at parity, it seems to be, because they say they're 25 by 25, maybe I'm wrong. But the 25, that's about nine feet from there to there. So you double that and add another eight feet, so, so it's three, okay? Three times the height of that is, is, is the front space for that, as I understand. And you're putting in, basically, with 82 units times three, that's about 250 people, okay? And you're having them go in and out of the same one, one street all day long and all night long? That is really, it's not going to read well for the city councilors that voted for this. It has to go back to the drawing board. You know, I know that hill, La Place, and, and it is, it is important to have it be only one way. And I don't see, it's, it's just, and you're adding 250 people that have access to that? It's not workable. So we don't have, you know, for the goal that they state right on the website, okay? It is not, it isn't really kind. It isn't humanistic. It isn't realistic. And I'll tell you, those roof fires are a serious thing. Some, you probably won't care about this, but it is important. The Xcel Energy Smart Meter doesn't have top quality, or as we have with the analog meter, they don't have the same UL listing rating. And fires can happen on those, on those smart meters. And having 82 of them really close by, they operate at about 1% to 2% of power. And, and so the wireless radiation they're getting can go way, way high, depending on how they're collecting that data. Sometimes it's every 15 minutes. But because the meter themselves don't have solid UL listing, it can be a fire hazard. There are many websites that you can go to. StopSmartMeters.com gives a lot of facts. You might not agree with it, but you'll look at, you'll look at a lot of facts and, and put, "This kind of density isn't right." So we already know the motivating factor for the, the company who is hiring all these wonderful people to do the right thing, okay? And because we are actually deep-populating, except for the illegals that are coming in, because, because we're closing schools. So we want to make sure at 8% interest rate that we don't create a nightmare, okay? It's real serious. You gotta take your time to think about this. Please don't decide this tonight. Please postpone it. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was the last speaker I had signed up.
Do we have any voicemails?
We do.
Good evening. My name is Greg Beacom. I live on the south end of La Place Court, and would like to make comment on the Uplands parcel B1 development. Now, I am personally opposed to the project. I am also cognizant of the big money and special interests behind it, so I have no illusions about stopping it. They will say what they have to say and spend what they have to spend to make this happen. There has been a lot of slick talk about how this is going to be an enhancement and improvement to the surrounding neighborhoods. I respectfully disagree with them, our esteemed city advisors and traffic engineers. First, I'd like to express my concern about the residential density. 82 new homes with two-car garages will significantly increase traffic congestion into the existing neighborhood infrastructure, particularly with only one point of ingress and egress from the development. All of that traffic will be directed to either Oakwood Street or Lowell Boulevard. I predict traffic lights to control those intersections. This is already a high-traffic area with folks disregarding speed limits and traffic control devices. A case in point is the motorcycleist who lost his life at the intersection of 80th and Oakwood just last summer. Lastly, I understand this plan now comes to you as an amendment to do away with the cul-de-sac at the north end of La Place Court. A meaningless amendment to my mind that does nothing but create a more dangerous traffic situation. There are already traffic control devices at each end of the street, which are oftentimes ignored by those speeding up the hill as a shortcut to avoid the curve on Oakwood. This practice will only get worse with residents in the new development working due the same. I do respect my neighbor who proposes this amendment, but I respectfully disagree with his position that the cul-de-sac is a special benefit to those on the north end of La Place Court. I doubt many others on this street or the surrounding area take this position. In closing, I don't expect my concerns about residential density and single entrance and exit to the development to be addressed, due to the costs and recommended, recommendations of our city officials. But I do hope that if this development is approved, that it leaves the proposed cul-de-sac at the end of La Place Court in place as originally proposed. Thank you for this opportunity to be heard.
Hello, my name is James Travis. I'm a resident of Westminster. This message is to City Council, voting to deny the application for ODP on Bradburn parcel B1 to build 82 units on 16 acres. It is wrong on so many levels. Please vote no.
Good evening, city councilors. My name is Keith Aloniel. I'm the director of Crown Point Academy, a public charter school at 2900 West 86th Avenue and Federal Boulevard. I've talked several times before about my support of the Uplands community, and there are a few reasons why. The first is we've had enrollment waitlists for several years. We can't fit any more students in our current facility until we expand, but that's gonna be able to happen because of the Uplands project. Second, our school sits in a dangerous section of Federal Boulevard. We have no traffic signals, crosswalks, no sidewalks, and speeding vehicles all day long. As part of the $40 million in infrastructure improvements made by Uplands, all of these issues will be remedied. Additional housing will also help our current staff with more options, as well as providing homes for future Crown Point families. And that is a positive as well. I've been following the planning process for several years and have taken part in many, many meetings. The detailed plans for parcel B1 tonight, before you deliver on the details, consistent with everything that has been discussed, reviewed, and approved in the, in the past. The fact that this is the first parcel that will have mixed housing and parks sends a strong signal that the rest of this mixed-use community will deliver on the promises already made. Please vote yes on parcel B1 so we can start these much-needed infrastructure and housing projects. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Ryan McCoy, a lifelong resident of Westminster, and I currently live at 8170 Julian Street. I have served on the Board of Education and now am employed with Westminster Public Schools as the Executive Director of Post-Secondary Workforce Readiness, where I oversee the transformation at the former Random High School, which will become a full-service campus focused on career and technical education and student pathways. This regional training hub dubbed randomly imagined will provide students grade levels sixth to adult learners, an opportunity to build tangible skills and a career while earning a high school diploma and beyond. One of the career pathways offered will be construction. The campus has a magnitude of partners from the city of Westminster to Adams County, including higher education partners, as well as industry, including the Uplands. The Uplands community, we are partnering with members of their team to build out a program that will train, provide apprenticeships, and ultimately hire CTE graduates to work construction and trade jobs on-site. This is an exciting opportunity for WPS graduates to make a meaningful impact on the very communities that we were raised in. But this wouldn't happen without a strong community and industry partners such as the Uplands. Uplands is one of the most thoughtful planned communities I know of, a result of years of collaboration with the city, residents, and external stakeholders like WPS. I'm excited that we are finally at this point where we're seeing the years of planning come to life in the neighborhoods that will provide much-needed housing options and parks and sidewalks and trails. I urge you all to vote yes on parcel B1 tonight. It's consistent with what was approved in 2021, it's consistent with the city's comp plan, and it's consistent with the city's continued need, a diversity of housing and parks. This is just a slice of what we'll see develop over the next decade, and based on this, I can't wait to see the new community to be full and vibrant and active. So let's start moving dirt. Thanks.
Good evening. I am Juliette Abdel, the CEO of the Westminster Chamber. My address is P.O. Box 1453 here in Westminster. For the past several years, our organization has been following the planning process for Uplands, in large part because of the lack of housing options in our city, which has contributed to an increase in wholesale properties, in current properties, and households struggling to make ends meet, and employers finding it difficult to hire talent that can live where they work, and there's less than, of course, the ability to have economic mobility. Now, this project has already noted its countless benefits, and as a quick summary, these include a sustainable economy, diversity of housing options for residents, open space, greens, and parks that speak to our Colorado ethos, infrastructure that is lacking in the southern part of our city that will now benefit all. And for a view this evening is once again an opportunity to move this better project forward. And a yes vote tonight is a yes for launch of $40 million in critical public improvements like our sidewalks, crosswalks, traffic signals, and more. A yes illustrates you listen to the ongoing community needs and create a fair process for solutions to come forward. And more importantly, a yes is to Uplands, is a yes to a project that will catalyze our community forward. Please vote to move this project forward this evening. We've waited so many years, and as an organization that represents hundreds of businesses in and around our area, we truly see the positive impact this can have. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Morgan Hedendorf, and I would like to remind the city that the vote today to accept the Uplands development includes acceptance of the improvement of La Place as a court, and I am in favor of this. I know that it is foolish to oppose the Uplands development, and the city has already made countless concessions in favor of the developers. However, I do ask that as a resident of Bradburn Drive, if his family lives on La Place, that the city would give serious consideration to include the La Place as a court in the vote on the plan, and that this one concession would be given to residents. Designating La Place as a court is required for two reasons. One, public safety. And two, fairness and consistency with the existing rules and regulations for notice. One, safety. The place is currently a lonely street due to a tragic accident when a driver sped up the hill and broadsided a resident back near the driveway, causing permanent disability to the resident. As a resident of Bradburn Drive, we daily watch cars disregard this new one-way designation and speed up the hill the wrong way and at excess speed. We also watch a living sphere of cars speeding down Bradburn and leaving as a cut-through. Development on Bradburn is part of a larger planned development, and has the entire area gained additional businesses and residents. The number of using Bradburn and La Place streets will be increased, and there will be greater threat speeding down Bradburn and disregarding the one-way designation of La Place Street. Therefore, by designating La Place as a court, it will increase the safety of the residents in the neighborhood. Making La Place a court in that end is also consistent with the neighborhood's current layout, as Osceola Street, Newton Street, and Main Street are also not through the streets. I've heard objections to the plan, saying emergency vehicles would be unable to get up the hill in more time. However, I note that Westminster and the surrounding cities have halls of even greater grade with which emergency vehicles do not have a shield. For example, the nearby hill on Lowell between 80th and 81st is at an even steeper grade, and there is no problem there. I've also maybe argued that by making the street no longer a through street, it wouldn't be, shouldn't be allowed because it wouldn't be a public road. Mandering the street in that end near a court does not change the designation as a public road. Again, I think of Osceola Street, Newton Street, and Main Street as public examples within the very same neighborhood. Two, matter of fairness. The city must also include the La Place Court as part of the acceptance of the Uplands development as a matter of fairness and consistency with the city's rules and regulations. The public notices that have been sent out for floorless meetings and the meetings held by the city planners have both designated La Place as a court as part of the Uplands development plan on Bradburn. Therefore, the question before the city today, which is to accept or reject the Uplands development plan on Bradburn, includes La Place as a court. This is identified again in the notices and in the briefs our city representatives during the current meetings. Then all the city planners inexplicably removed the court from the plan that it voted on, but the city chancellor should not make that same mistake, and it should honor the fact that the plans before it today that it is voting on, whether or not it accepts Uplands development on Bradburn Drive, includes the La Place designation as a court. The city cannot therefore accept the Uplands development plan on Bradburn without also accepting La Place as a court. I understand the law of Uplands development. I understand the law of the Uplands development plan on Bradburn. However, part of the city's responsibility is to ensure that La Place is remaining this designation as a court as is put into the plan and provided by public notice throughout the city and to the residents. For those two reasons, the safety of residents and consistency with the public notice, the city must vote to approve La Place Court and a vote to approve the Uplands development on Bradburn. Thank you for your time.
That was the last voicemail.
Thank you. All right, I'll go back to, I had Counselor Baker and then Mayor Protem.
Thank you. This is just a quick question. It would be for like, I mean, the developer. So it's my understanding that for most of this really development, there's no private outdoor space. The outdoor spaces are being really fulfilled by front porches, so there's no backyards or side yards where you could barbecue or sunbathe.
So much of the backyards, because they're alley-loaded homes, are the access to the driveways. There are side yards on all the homes that have green space within them. We're just not counting those as part of that 400 square feet. We're counting that 400 square feet using porches and patios. So there is green space on the lots as well.
Well, no, I was saying private outdoor space.
It is private to their lot. We're just not quantifying it as the definition of private outdoor space for, that's defined in the single-family attach and detach standards. But there is green, private side yards on these homes as well.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
I have questions about the cul-de-sac in La Place. Trying to visualize this, and I pulled it up on the map, and so I'm just curious, I mean, on the diagrams here, it says that there's fire access, so I imagine that the fire department looked at this and the cul-de-sac was designed in order to accommodate fire apparatus. Is there, similar to like the new development, one of the questions that was asked was about if there's access cut off from the other side, what would the tactic be used if, you know, if you couldn't get down from La Place and you had to come up from the other side?
So the cul-de-sac does meet our regulation, so we're good there. And it does cut off access there, but we would, you know, it's just like with any neighborhood that we pre-planned for. And so there's different routes that we could come from, from Station 2, Station 1, that we would be able to accommodate this cul-de-sac.
Okay. And then this is probably more for the developer. Thank you, Chief. So when you were, there was questions about what it's going to be made of. I'm assuming it's probably asphalt, but could you validate what the street's going to be made of?
Yes, sir. We'll meet all city standards on that, that will be paved, asphalt road, a city curb as well, that I believe that's dedicated right away on 82nd as well.
And then my last question on this is probably maybe for you and Heath Klein. I'm just curious, like as you went through this with the neighborhood and stuff, what other, like how did you land on this as a solution? It sounds like obviously over time, the city's tried various things to try to accommodate the safety concerns. And I guess the reason, the spirit of my question is, is I understand why the folks on La Place would want this and why it makes a lot of sense, but I'm also trying to understand for the folks on 82nd Place, you know, you are making it so their access is going to be a lot different than it is today. So, you know, what other options were there? Why did we land on this one? And how do we kind of think about the, some of the concerns that were brought up by the folks on 82nd Place as well as on the hill there?
Terrific. I apologize, I was changing slides, but I realize you're not probably able to see those, so I'm showing La Place Court here. We looked at four or five different possibilities on this site. So just know that our engineers worked with the city. This ultimately became the recommendation for safety, for drainage, for all of the reasons. So sir, I can tell you, I saw designs that connected, tried to straighten out, if you will, the angle of that where you joined Bradburn, that maybe showed on parcel B1 that that would connect into the cul-de-sac, right, and do that. So there was a, almost it would go through and not intersect right at Bradburn, but through B1. But in the end, this was something that we thought addressed it. I'll certainly defer to Heath, but from a community standpoint, we presented four or five different plans really, because this is their decision in a lot of ways, right? It's off-site. So we circulated as many different plans as we could for the site.
And so I guess just forward-thinking, and I mean, obviously, we're talking about one parcel today.
Sure.
But the point is fair and valid that another parcel's coming, and this is really part of that other parcel. So how, I mean, have you started thinking through what that's going to look like in that other parcel when you start building that out? Is it going to potentially change connectivity or?
I'm going to defer to Bonnie on that. Just remind, to set the stage from the map, that has a maximum of 26 units on that south side B1, so less dense even, but that's how to set the stage for the density.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. We have started looking at that site plan for the B2 neighborhood. We've gone through the city pre-app process just within the last couple of weeks. What we're looking at from a connection standpoint and in compliance with the PDP is the access for that B2 parcel will align with the Osceola access on the north side of Bradburn. So at this point, we're not really planning for any reconfigurations on 82nd.
Great. And then my last question is definitely for staff. And so one of the things that was also brought up in public comment was about, you know, obviously, any kind of hill, when it snows, is problematic at best. So when you're looking at this, snow removal and de-icing, how does, are we able to comfortably be able to clear snow and ice from this and this configuration? And has there been thought into, does that change kind of our routes and how we do snow removal on that street?
So discussions have, Heath Klein, Assistant City Engineer and Transportation Engineer. So there have been discussions, and yes, we will, if this were to move forward with the current design, we would look at the way to serve our snow removal. Currently, it kind of just, we plow mainly down the one-way, and so not necessarily on the sides. And if it's a two-way street, then we will be snow removing more of the width of the street.
Okay. And then last, on our actual motion sheet, if we go, is this recommendation on here with the cul-de-sac or is this without? Because I know the Planning Commission, they recommended we don't do the cul-de-sac, so I'm a little confused what the actual motion is that's on our paper.
The staff recommendation is with the cul-de-sac.
I thought so, but I just wanted to be sure before we go down any paths. And then I want to just validate one other thing that we heard about water and stuff. My understanding, and I think this is true with what we've heard from Uplands throughout, is this, there was already allocations in our water system to serve some sort of development, and you guys actually are below what was allowed in the current system in our utility.
Yeah, that's absolutely correct, sir. Across the whole site for certain. I'll recall back that this site, just as a reminder for Shaw Heights, is between three and four dwelling units. When you include B2 in the site, we are going to be the exact same density, three to four dwelling units. So sir, that allocation was made here for these units, and we are in fact going to be well below the water allocation that was originally reserved for these, for all of Uplands.
Okay, great. And actually, and I apologize, and this is more for staff, when Counselor Baker was asking his questions, and I understand the majority of the city is a little bit different, but this is, I've seen this in multiple newer developments, so I'm just trying to think of what other ones there are, because we've just recently talked about one that has one in and out, which is on 108th. And I don't know what that's called, but it's next to where there's a proposed, potential proposed subdivision, and they have emergency access, much like you're seeing here in similar one street that goes through it. But then I also recall that the one that's near Crown, is it Crown Point, by Sonic and stuff, that's a very similar product. Is that accurate? Kind of the same thing where it's mostly alleys and they kind of have public street that weaves in and out? I guess my point is, it's not that uncommon for us to see that in more modern building with this kind of development.
In recent years, we've seen more alley-loaded product. It accommodates a smaller lot. If you can imagine a very narrow lot, wouldn't be conducive to a front-loaded driveway because then you wouldn't have the pedestrian infrastructure that you would have on a much wider lot. And so, yeah, it's very comparable to Connections or Alpine Vista up at 88th and Lowell. The one you're referring to was Walnut Grove, and that was an older duplex development, had a single entrance with an emergency access, so that would be a good comparison with respect to that.
What about the one on 100th in like Garrison-ish? It's actually a little, probably a block east.
That was Crown Point, right? That is an alley-loaded product, smaller lots. Granted, these lots will be smaller than we've seen in our city. This is a good bit smaller, but well thought out in design. But it would be similar in design to being an alley-loaded product.
Okay, great. Those are all my questions. Thank you.
Counselor Emmons.
Probably for staff, but can we walk through this 82nd street that will be a cul-de-sac? I'm unclear, it's not clear on the map, but is this currently a city street that we maintain?
It is right-of-way currently, and I believe it is unimproved, meaning there is not asphalt curb and gutter on this road right now. Correct. So this development would improve it to be paved with curb gutter, sidewalk, and it would be a local road.
Okay. I just want to make sure that if we approve it, that it would become a city street that we would maintain.
That is correct, yes.
Or maintain city street status. Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Counselor Nambala.
Just on the 82nd Avenue question, similar to Mayor Protem, I'm just curious how the B2 development can create a better grid system or connectivity to address some of the concerns that, especially the two residents that are on 82nd Avenue, might have. And, you know, grids are great because they actually disperse traffic and they, you know, instead of focusing them on to one street, you know, versus many others, they actually can reduce the traffic impact of a development. So I'm just, with Bradburn, anyway, I think the 82nd Avenue, could it continue? I don't know if the neighbors, if the residents would like that or not, but even into the new B2 development or connecting Osceola down into connecting 82nd, it can be, I feel like- it can be, I feel like their desire for a little bit more connectivity could be achieved.
So we have, as Mr. Buckner had mentioned, we have looked at several different options that were here. So by connecting the cul-de-sack of 82nd Avenue to the proposed Osceola or, you know, the road that goes into PA1, you still are providing that ability that those residents to get to the signal at 80th and Lowell or Oakwood to come through and cut through the subdivision. There's also some grading that is a bigger issue because we start to go up the hill on the east side there of the cul-de-sack. So those were taken into account. The developer is looking at different options of the way that that 26-home community is going to be laid out, but we have not fallen on a, an exact design. So we are still looking at it, including potentially another emergency access point for this cul-de-sack to get into, for emergencies, to get to 82nd Avenue if needed.
Okay. I would just ask that we do look at that. I mean, it sounds like you've worked with the community closely regarding the 84th, or I should say the non-access to 84th, which I do not love, but then again, trying to listen to the community, so it's a balance. So hopefully that communication can continue. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, I hate to make you come up one more time. Keep you awake. We've heard over and over different speakers tonight about will the fire trucks work and whatnot. Would you just, I've been at your table where you have all the plans, you look at everything, you're bringing up things that you see, things that aren't going to work. Would you just explain that process a little bit so that it's on record and that people hear this is a okay plan that you see and fire trucks can get in and out?
Absolutely. I'd be happy to. So when we take, when we look at something like this with an ODP or PDP, what we do is we look at the site layout, we look at the access. So we're looking at street width, we're looking at turning radius to make sure our trucks can get in. When we look at a subdivision such as this, when you have the main street that comes in, you have what we're calling the alleys, I believe. And on the plans that I'm looking at that are part of the package tonight, they're about 30 feet in the back. And so we, we just want to make sure that we do have access for our trucks to come through, that we can turn onto those alleyways, that they're wide enough, that the parking, so that's another part of this, is do we allow parking, do we not allow parking? That we're able to maneuver. I'm looking at this site carefully. I've been back there with Chief Burke, who's our operations chief. Yeah, we're very comfortable with the site layout. When we talk about access coming in, we do have the emergency access from the north off of 84th Avenue, which is great, but one of the things that we have in this is like if we had a fire on the west side that Counselor Baker was talking about, you know, we want to look at ways can we get from the north and the south or the east and the west. We want to be able to come out of fire from two different directions. And looking at the loud, the subdivision, it definitely gives us that possibility to do so. Another thing we look at is dead ends. So we have a couple of dead ends on the west side there, but we look at length. Is it less than 150 feet? Is it a hammerhead? What do we need for a turnaround to get our apparatus out? So if we make a wrong turn or we just need to reposition, we're able to do that. Looking at this site, we are able to do that. And again, we did talk, did talk about the sprinkler homes, which offers comfort. This does meet the city standard with the width. I believe it was just one foot decrease, 15 feet between the buildings. And there were some comments about the rooftops and things and, yeah, and the wind-driven fire or something like that, extreme, that certainly is a possibility. But it is, and a general layout, it's something that the fire department's very comfortable with, with our access and the ability to maneuver our fire trucks through this. And one final piece is that when we look at this, turning radius, it's based on our biggest truck. So that's our aerial. We have a station two and station six, 42-foot, and that's the turning radius we use. So we're not looking at the engines, which are much smaller. Yep.
Perfect. I'm sorry to make you come up again, but there's so much misperception. I wanted people to understand, you don't take this lightly. You pour over these and make sure everybody's safe.
That's absolutely right. We have an exceptional staff that does that. And another piece of this is water supply. So what we do is we look at how many residents are coming in, construction type and occupancy and that. And, you know, with the city, the building code drives that, fire code drives that. And we ensure that we have the proper hydrant placement and the amount of hydrants in there to be able to effectively fight a fire.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That got answered. I'm going through everybody's questions that they had. Some didn't deal with what we have to make a decision on. Off-street parking, we said it was 32 feet wide? From curb to curb?
Thank you for that question. So Osceola Street is a local street. This is consistent with what we had in the PDP, and I believe the city standard local street. So it's a 59-foot right-of-way. It has 30 feet of pavement, which accommodates two 10-foot travel lanes and two 7-foot parking lanes.
And then off-street parking? That was the question they asked.
So the off-street parking, I think there is some confusion on some of the numbers that were given. So let me just walk through those real quick. So our parking, we have 88 garage spaces for the single-family attached homes. We have 76 garage spaces for the single-family detached homes. And then we have 48 spaces on Osceola Street. 41 surface spaces. Those are kind of sprinkled throughout the neighborhood for a total of 255 spaces, if I just did all that math right. But we, it's a mix of the on-street and the off-street surface spaces just internal to the neighborhood. We didn't include any of the perimeter spaces in that count.
Okay.
Mayor, the only other thing, if we were going to clarify on the garage.
Oh, sure.
I just wanted to be sure on rebuttal on the comments, to be clear, all the garages are a minimum of 20 feet wide and 20 feet, 22 feet deep, which is standard, right? What we are asking for is for a few exceptions for the stairs on one side of them to come into that 22-foot. That obviously only happens when there are homes that have a grade change, so we think that's very few of them. It also depends on that grade, how many stairs there are, right? So we have to ask, ask, excuse me, for the maximum exception. That's why we're making that. So we completely concur. We want that standard. I would point out that two of our product types actually have three-car garages in this. So it is a very rare exception that we are asking for. It is only for that stair loading area when we have that. So we agree, we're not trying to change the footprint of those garages at all.
Perfect. Thanks. Anyone else? Mayor Pro-Tam?
We've heard a lot about the partner that does funding. Can you talk a little bit about that and their involvement and how standard it is for these kind of big developments to have those kind of fundings and how that works so people understand it a little bit better?
Sure. I'm happy to address. There were comments about the partner, the purchaser of the site. What I think we believe is very important is that we have multiple builders come through on this site, right? So there's a partner that will fund a lot of the infrastructure and work, you know, through that process to bring that in and then go out to find individual builders. So we will have multiple builders on this site. Just as an example, sir, there's been a lot of questions about affordable housing. We're talking about 82 units. We have 317 affordable housing below 80% AMI in process, right? So we have so many different developers on this site that will come in. So it's so important to realize that yes, there is a primary owner, right? But then the job is to go find that, curate the builders to bring in the different types of housing and all the different price points, so we actually have a complete neighborhood. So completely fair to say that there's an investor in a site, as every project has. I would just point out, as there were references, this team has been here from the beginning. We're all local. We all grew up here. We're going to continue to be involved in this project and make sure that every promise we've made comes to live in the PDPs and the ODPs that come in front of you.
Thank you.
And to help people understand, it's all with, when all parcels are built out, you will have all of those different kinds of housing available. It was never meant to be on some of these smaller ones all in one place. When we look at the big one that you showed us, that you have your different things going, it's my understanding that that's where we're going to see a lot of different affordable, at different levels, homes and rentals available.
Exactly. Yes. And that's why we show that, just so people know, there's that full snapshot of the community.
Okay. I don't see any other questions. It is 11:07. I will close the public hearing. Do we have a motion? Mayor Pro-Tam?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the official development plan for Uplands Filing 2, Block 1. Subject to conditions set forth in the summary of staff recommendations herein, this recommendation is based on the findings that the official development plan generally complies with criteria in Section 11-5-15 of the Westminster Municipal Code.
Counselor Emmons?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass item, where are we at? 10B6. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Emmons?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I'll be in favor of supporting this tonight. Thank you for clarifying the garage space. That was very helpful in understanding this spare, the stair space, that it would just be on one side and not in total of 19 and removing those extra feet. So does make an extra difference when you're in a smaller home. And then with that, I know that there was concern with one entrance with being in a neighborhood. And I know that there was concern, I did address it in a concept review that came forward on 108th and Wadsworth. While I understand the concern, I think the Marshall Fire kind of amplified and made red flags and made us all aware of ingress, negress. And I will say that I grew up in a neighborhood that had one point of access. There wasn't heavy traffic. It was one, one entrance, one entrance in and one entrance out, exit out. And so it never was a problem for any kind of situation. And that neighborhood is more than 20, 25 years old. So we have pockets in the city that have one entrance in and one entrance or one exit. And so meeting all of these expectations, they were well explained as far as what they are asking for, for exceptions, and therefore I will be supporting it.
Counselor Baker?
I will, I will be really voting against this of the proposal. I think really good design would mandate two entrances to this property. I think good design would have full use of all the parking with two parking spaces in really driveways. I think we're condemning the future people who live here to unbelievably high HOA fees when they have to maintain all the roads.
Counselor Numella?
Overall, I am in support of this project. I think that the, I just, one, I do want to clarify for the residents and community that provided public comment, we don't set the price for homes in the community. We do not set the real estate market. We react to it, and in that reaction, an example is that we do work with developers to get affordable housing built. And that is one of the things that was just brought up, that will be built in a different portion of this site. But we also work to get, to get other affordable projects built. And I pointed out the cost of these homes because they are surprisingly at midpoint in what you see in new construction. New construction, even in Westminster, is $850,000 and north. In Broomefield, Nevada, it's $900,000. And even in Thornton, it is, I have no idea how people are affording this, but the design of this project does actually decrease the overall cost to build and ultimately, hopefully, the sale of these units. So I just wanted to make that point. I think the, the developer has worked hard with the surrounding community to identify and implement some off-site improvements, like the, the drainage impacts for Auburn Lane, as well as working with the residents on Le Place Court. Obviously, I mentioned earlier, I'd love to see a solution that addresses a little more connectivity. And I think the additional sidewalks and the on-street parking on Bradburn Drive will actually slow traffic. On-street parking, when it's there, does have an impact of reducing speeds because of the perception of more confined space. And the density of this project is something that has been in the comprehensive plan for many, many years. And it is, you know, the mountain terrace apartments right next to it are R18. It's 18 units to the acre. This is five. I think that it's a good transition between those, those uses. And I really respect the fact that the views are being maintained from, from Bradburn Drive and from Lowell Boulevard with the approach to the project. So that's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Mayor Pro-Tam?
I will be supporting this tonight. I will say to the community, and this is going to be a continued discussion because there's a lot of different parcels that are up for development. But when we approved some of the initial ODPs last year, I would ask folks to remember that this council actually did ask for less density than was originally being talked about, specifically around heights and things of that nature. I've heard a lot of pack and stack, and that certainly wasn't the conversation. But it was about having a very diverse amount of offerings in this, what is going to be probably the last really big development in the city with us being landlocked. I would second the ask from Counselor Numella that as you continue, that you do what you've done here and work with the neighbors in that neighborhood on 82nd and see if there's a possible solution that makes that better. More access is, is good, and I agree with Counselor Numella that that disperses that traffic out. So I hope that you continue to do what you've done with the folks on Le Place and figure out if there's a solution long-term that better suits everybody in that corner of our community. But otherwise, I appreciate all the work that you've done to date, and I think that this is, is a good addition to the city.
Counselor Seymour?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be supporting this today. It meets all the technical issues, but it also is exactly as Counselor Numella said, this has been in our plan since even the 2013 plan. I don't go back before that. So, and it does meet those density criteria. I'm very happy to see that we have an emergency access on the north and that we did honor the neighbors on the 84th and the improvements to Bradburn Boulevard. I'm, I'm very willing to keep and not make any exceptions on what staff proposed on Le Place Court. It's asphalt and it's concrete. If it doesn't work, we can change it. You know, maybe in the future, we have an opportunity, even with the grading, to run 82nd all the way across to Lowell as well. But it's just another opportunity. And as some of my colleagues have already said, the word affordable is never mentioned in this project at all. So if this is 400 to 600,000, it is going to be attainable for many. The median home sales per year this last month in the Westminster-Broomfield area was $633,000. And that's the median, half above that, half below that. And those houses were on the market for less than 23 days. So that's where the market is right now. We don't drive the market. The market drives the market. So, thank you.
Counselor Baker, did you have something else?
Yes, I did. It was more of a general observation. It was more of a general observation. As a city, we go to great lengths to make good rules. We're supposed to learn from our experiences in the past, and what worked and what didn't and what was good. So we make these rules, and then I'm so disappointed when we ignore our own rules. It's like we don't learn from our own history. Just an observation.
Mayor Protem?
I would just add that the rules allow flexibility for us to judge the base in facts that are in front of us and allow us to make decisions parcel by parcel or block by block. That is how the system works and allows us to use our seven brains and our discretion to do what's best for the city.
Counselor Azadi?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to say that, you know, in 2021, when I said no to this project, it was for lots of reasons. Mainly, the affordable housing, it wasn't enough. But since then, I mean, look at, look around the community, look around society right now, we have a housing crisis. You know how many calls I get every week from older Coloradans who say, "Obie, I'm trapped in my house. I have this big lot, this big house I don't want to maintain anymore, but I look around and there's nothing available. There's literally no supply." Or from younger Coloradans who say, "Obie, I'm living with my mom. I've been living with her for 10, 15 years, past college. What am I supposed to do? I'm renting 2,500, $3,000 apartments. I want to own a home." But they look around and they say, "I can't find anything." Or from low-income Coloradans who say, "Obie, I'm looking around." So it continues. My point is, everyone deserves the choice to be able to live with dignity, and dignity requires supply. And the 317 units of affordable housing, though that was low in 2021 when I rejected this, it's better than zero. And where we are now, 2023, is way worse than we were in 2021, and it's only going to get worse as we don't build. We need to build, and we need to build a diversified portfolio of stock. So townhomes, condos, duplexes, et cetera. So I can't in good conscience say no to this. I think this project is necessary. We may not like all the details of all the various things, but like everyone here has said, each lot will be looked at individually on its own merits. It's not an approval of everything blindly. We are, like Mayor Protem said, we are looking at this and judging the facts as they change. And I think the hallmark of a good policymaker or public servant is knowing, is actually learning, right? And changing your mind as data presents itself. So I'm not afraid to do that. So I'm, I will be a yes on this, because too many Westminsterites, or whatever we call ourselves, need this and want this.
I will be supporting the developers. You have heard what this council said when you came eons ago, and that was, we needed diverse, and diverse and different kinds of housing means, it depends on where you yourself are, of what that even means. You can't define affordable. And this is one small piece of that puzzle. You gave us a sneak peek at what you're maybe looking at for the next piece. But in all of that, you listened to the community and the city as a whole, because open space and the view vistas have been incredibly important to this community. And you made sure, I know you had different plans for where across the street from the Poli Fire, and every day, there are cars parked there looking at that vista. And you have made sure that that stayed open space and that you built over to the side on that other parcel, and we keep that vista. And you also did the same at 84th and Federal, and looking into downtown. So I will be supporting, and if there's nothing else, roll call.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nemella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
And Counselor Baker?
No.
The motion passes on a 6-1 vote.
That brings us to Resolution 26. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution Number 26, authorizing the city manager to execute the proposed memorandum of understanding between the City of Westminster and the Westminster Professional Firefighters International Association of Firefighters Local 2889.
Counselor Emmons?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Resolution Number 26. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nemella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
That brings us to Resolution 27. I'm sorry, Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution Number 27, authorizing the city manager to execute a purchase and sale agreement with MJ Development LTD in substantially the same form as attached for the sale of Schoenberg Farms, described as Lot 14A and Lot 5 of the first replat of Schoenberg Farms commercial.
Counselor Emmons?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Resolution 27. Are there any comments? Counselor Baker?
Isn't this the one where there are not enough parking spaces just for the retail? Or is that a different one?
I'd have to ask the Economic Development Director, Kimball, to speak to that.
Welcome.
They will comply with all of our parking requirements that are in the code.
Was this the one where they had a ground floor retail and then residential second floor?
In one of the concepts, which is on the private side, so not the city-owned property, I think you might be talking about the property that's owned by the Tepper family, where they were proposing two concepts, one that paid homage to the historical architecture of the Schoenberg site, which would be retail on the bottom and residential on top, or it could have been, or it may be in a more modern-looking container sort of configuration. But even with that, they will adhere to our parking code.
So this is just the milk barn part of it in the silo?
Correct.
Okay. But in the presentation, we got this, well, I mean, this did not include the farmhouse on the front end of the property?
I'm sorry. Can you repeat?
The farmhouse on the front end.
This, for this PSA, yes, sir. It would include that.
So it includes that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And this is the one we're giving, we're basically selling them to it for $10?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And how does this differ from the previous plan that was brought up, but that was really rejected because we made an assessment of the, of the really, I mean, the financial capabilities of that, of that really presenter?
Right. So the prior proposal was to turn the historic site itself, and it didn't involve the private property to the south, that it would be used as a wedding venue, an event venue. We had entered into only an LOI with that entity, and we're doing our own due diligence, as well as, I would say, that private entity was also doing their due diligence on the site. So we encouraged them to try to understand the site, understand the costs associated with, understand what would need to be done. And, you know, there wasn't a lot of movement on an actual plan for the site. There was a great idea, a wonderful idea, but it didn't seem that we were making progress in terms of an actual submission for a PDP even.
Okay. And then looking to the future on this one, how much of, I mean, the responsibility for maintaining, I mean, the, I mean, the historic site, does this take off the city? Or is there going to be any really financial responsibility left on the city?
That's a great question. So there still is a lot to be negotiated. And I would underline, there's many requirements to get to the actual closing. And that includes negotiating an economic development agreement, negotiating a repurchase option. So there's a lot of those things, and all of those items will need to come back to this body for your approval, ultimately. But I would say, from your question towards, will we be responsible in the future if we sell this property as is outlined here? No. The city would be completely absolving itself of those historic covenants. They don't leave the property. The property still has to be protected. And MJ Development has gone and had conversations, plural, with the State Historic Board. They'll have to go to our local Historic Landmark Board and receive a certificate of appropriateness. So there's a lot of steps there, and there also are a lot of protections, including, as I mentioned, the repurchase option. We want to make sure that what we are presented here and anything that we would bring back to this body would be what actually happens. That's the most important thing. So I'll call back to, a few weeks ago, you know, it was a hard situation, but Holly Park was not making progress. So your protection is that repurchase agreement. So we didn't, what we wanted to get done was not getting done. So ultimately, you need that, you need that safety net for the city. So if that historic element is not being respected, if it's not being delivered in the time or in the manner that has been presented, those are all things that are part of that repurchase agreement.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Baker? I mean, sorry, Counselor Seymour?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple clarifying points. Is, there is no farmland left in that development area, is that correct?
Correct.
And in the agenda memo honoring this historic site and giving it that dedication from the state and local historical board, the city with grants from those groups has put in so far about $1.9 million to maintain them as they are, to maintain that historically?
Correct. The state and the city, yes.
Okay, thank you. And then a recent appraisal of the land came back as zero?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we'd be getting tenfold the value of it with our $10 bill?
Well, zero times zero, I mean, zero times anything, right?
I'm trying to find a bargain there.
Yes, yes, sir. That's correct.
Correct. And then the agenda memo also talks about the historic property of this, and as far as honoring the National Jewish Hospital and the Jewish history in this area, and that the developers were working in conjunction and having discussions with Rabbi Brackman, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Mayor Protem?
I just want to say that I'm excited to support this. I'm excited that you found a partner, hopefully that is more successful than the last person that we spoke to. But what I'm most excited about is the fact that they are interested in the heritage that this site brings, and that they're working with folks that share that heritage inside of our community who called Westminster home. I think that's a really a great thing. So I wish them the best of success in bringing us something forward that we can continue to agree on, but I'm excited to support this tonight.
Thank you.
See no other conversation. Roll call, please.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nemella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
And Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
That brings us to second reading of Counselors' Bill Number 40. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass Counselor Bill Number 40 on second reading vacating a portion of Shaw Boulevard right of way within the Westminster Second Filing subdivision.
Counselor Emmons?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass on second reading, Counselors' Bill Number 40. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Nemella?
Just for this one, I know that we were still looking at when exactly it would be, the roadway would actually be closed off. Do we have a better timeline for that?
Yeah, I'd ask our DPW interim director to come forward and speak to that. But my understanding is, is when you approve the transfer, it becomes private property and of the ownership of the Uplands group.
Welcome.
Yes, so Sarah Borgers, interim director of Public Works and Utilities, that's accurate. As soon as this council takes action, assuming that's a yes vote, then you would, then that would be private property. In terms of that road actually getting cut off, that's still something that we are working with the developer on the timing of that, but we would be sure to do plenty of communication with the nearby residents prior to that happening.
On that, can we just get a better timeline and milestones for when all of that's going to happen, so that there's clarity for us as well as for the community on what your process is going to be? I know you just mentioned it, but the actual, hey, in the next month, we expect to do this, and we're going to give, you know, talk to the residents at this time, and that's...
Yes. If we could get back to you on that, on a more formal response, I think that would probably be best, because there's still a few moving parts in terms of what's going to actually happen out there.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nemella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
No.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
And Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-1 vote.
It is 11:32, and do we have reason for executive session?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, we do also have a post-meeting presentation, I believe, on the agenda, but following the post-meeting presentation, we have agendized an executive session discussion of a personnel matter, the annual reviews for a city manager, city attorney, and presiding judge pursuant to Westminster Municipal Code Section 111-3C1 and Colorado Revised Statute 2464024F1.
Give your name and that you're willing to go into executive session once we finish our post-meeting.
Obie Azadi, yes?
It'll be quick.
Sarah Nemella? Yes, as long as it's quick.
Steve Demat, yes.
Nancy McNally, yes.
Lindsay Emmons, yes.
Rich Seymour, yes.
Bruce Baker, yes.
Okay. We are adjourned from the main meeting, and we will take a quick break, for anybody that needs one, and meet in the other room.